...that compiled all of their work. She is one of 27 schools in the country that received this grant and they have $5,000 that were awarded to them to upgrade the Cougar Den. Our final recognition tonight is from Major Clarity, which is our career exploration software. They keep track of all of our students who log on and complete different assessments to see what they want to do when they are finished with high school. And this year, we were recognized as one of the Major Clarity higher users. So that means that over 80% of our 6th through 12th grade students have logged on to Major Clarity and completed assessments to start thinking about what they want to do when they are finished with high school here.
For those that received recognition tonight, this is gonna be a fairly long meeting. So I will tell you this, you are more than welcome to leave if you would like to leave. Typically, we do have that very often that when we do recognition, that folks tend to leave from time to time and that's perfectly fine. So feel free to if you'd like. has a statement that he would like to read. Dr. Sears.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairwoman, and members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening in advance of public comments. First, I'd like to thank you for the courage and leadership that's been shown over the past several months in regard to our work on equity. Nobody ever promised that any of this would be easy, but neither did anyone warn us that it would be as difficult as it seems to have become. You're each to be applauded for making the decisions that have established Pulaski County as the leading school division in southwest Virginia for doing the work that is very much needed and making the changes that are required. It is unfortunate that our leadership on the issue of equity has been passed with such a negative light within our community when only a few months ago, Pulaski County Public Schools was being celebrated for leading the district and offering four days a week of in-person instruction to all students and then leading the state and returning to five days of classes per week. People were singing our praises when we were the first provision to find an acceptable way for band cheer football students to showcase their talents in front of the largest crowds that have attended any events during the past year. It was that same courageous leadership that led to the construction of this beautiful middle school that has made education a much more positive experience for the hundreds of our county's children. It has been the vision and priorities of this school board that has resulted in teacher raises for six consecutive years, significant reductions in health insurance premiums for all employees, and ensured that every school became fully accredited for the first time in a decade. If anybody wanted to do a study on effective transformative school leadership that has genuinely made life better for teachers and students, there's no better example than Pulaski County Public Schools. In a few minutes, you're gonna hear from some of our citizens who have concerns about our equity mission, goals, and requirements from the Virginia Department of Education and General Assembly. I have recently had conversations with individuals in the community about their concerns and also watched the video from a local search service where the issue of equity was discussed this past Sunday. Let me just say that the misinformation is astounding and it seems that there may be an intentional attempt to stoke the fire of fear and hatred in order to drum up an outrage from our citizens. Although it is unfortunate that there is such vehement opposition to a school division trying to make life better for kids, it is our reality and our issue to work through. So in an attempt to set the stage for these public comments, I would like to make a few points of clarification and a few editorial observations. Points of clarification: There's nothing on the agenda this evening regarding our equity work or the state's model guidance for the treatment of transgender students. If folks came here tonight hoping to influence a vote, the impact of their efforts will not be known today. The state's policy for the treatment of transgender students has currently been worked into a policy proposal with the legal staff with the Virginia School Board Association. We do not yet know what the policy will state about bathrooms or locker rooms, so all of the statements about a decision having already been made are completely false. These policies will be sent to us later this month or in early June. They will then be presented to the school board for discussion and recommended revisions. A vote will not occur on any of these policies until a month after they are made available to the public on board docs and the school board has had an opportunity to discuss them. This will most likely occur in July or August. PCPS have not adopted a curriculum that is based on critical race theory. Most of us aren't even sure exactly what that means. The Virginia Department of Education establishes the core standards and we teach those standards. The state's standards for every course can be found on the Virginia Department of Education's website. The only curriculum that we develop is with local electives and there's been nothing new approved for next year. Every school division in Virginia is currently attempting to work through the same issues as its PCPS. We're trying to decide how to approach inequity and ensuring the rights of every student in a way that meets the legal guidelines that's set forth by the state, but also makes a meaningful impact for students and families. The work that we are doing will not harm any students and might actually make things better for some. These are a few editorial observations. It is my open belief that the citizens of Pulaski County will start to take the time to actually look at what we're working on and not assign so much value to the misinformation that is put out on social media or spoken from the pulpit. We are more than happy to meet the folks to discuss any initiatives that we undertake and we welcome any and all feedback when it's based on an actual set of facts and not from assumptions or speculations made on social media. Observation number two, or editorial observation number two, every single school employee and school board member here today has given something of significance to the children of Pulaski County. We volunteer our time for after-school events, donate money for every cause that comes our way, tutor those who struggle, and publicly celebrate the successes of our kids whenever possible. We have people here who personally spent hundreds of dollars to provide a struggling family with a good Christmas. We have some who spend their Thanksgiving break delivering holiday meals to families in need. We personally pay for athletics equipment for students who can't afford it, buy coats for kids in the winter, cover the cost of field trips, and send kids to camp. We've even had some who went together to cover off year-end expenses as a way to ease a family burden after a student unexpectedly passed away. Pulaski County Public Schools is made up of some really great people who are doing amazing things on behalf of the children in our community. Recent attempts to cast us as villains in some type of politically charged soap opera are incredibly unfair, profoundly wrong, and should be unacceptable to our community. Finally, public schools do not have an incentive to judge lifestyles or the resources to sustain animosity. We take care of children. Doing right by every student is what drives our decisions and making life better for kids is what dictates our actions. It is really the only work that is worth doing and fortunately for Pulaski County, we do it well. Thank you again for letting me speak this evening. At this time, we will hold an open public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Sears. Bear with me for just a second. I want to make sure everybody hears me. A public comment, we have quite a few people here tonight and I'm sure that many of you would like to address the board, and we welcome your comments. Typically, we allow for five minutes. If you're here tonight representing a group of people, we will allow you five minutes. If you're here tonight on your own behalf, we will allow you three minutes to speak. We do ask that you are courteous and we do ask that you do not bring up individual employees with regard to the school system, but we are thankful that you're here. A lot of people may think that we don't want to see you here. We actually do. It's important that this community understands what Pulaski County Public Schools is trying to do and so we certainly welcome you tonight and we are glad that you're here. So with that said, it's right at 6 o'clock, we'll go ahead and open public comment. If you would, feel free to come to the microphone. Please state your name and please state your address as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Dr. Sears, my name's Beal Williams from Draper, Virginia. I've been coming from this board since January of this year. I've voiced my concern about the dangers of allowing biological males unchecked total access to female bathrooms, locker rooms, and showering facilities. I've asked many questions to this board and the majority of my questions have remained unanswered. Today, I'd like to discuss the model policies for the treatment of transgender students in Virginia public schools. For those of all you here that don't know what this is, this is a set of guidelines that the Virginia Department of Education had distributed to all public school districts they need to use when setting a policy in the treatment of transgenders. There's 20 pages of topics covered and everyone should read it in its entirety. There's a section in this model policy that discusses curriculum. It states school divisions may take an inclusive approach by incorporating educational content that is transgender-affirming into general curriculum such as history, literature, and science. Basically, this means our students will have transgender-affirming ideology and principles incorporated into their curriculum in the school's library collections. This is an act of indoctrinating our children's impression of minds into questioning or denying their gender identity. Now, I have a series of questions here I'd like to ask anyone in general if they'd like to answer. My first question to the board is if Pulaski County Public Schools incorporate transgender curriculum and educational resources including literature into K through 12 classrooms? Answer or not? My second question is can anyone on this board inform us if any transgender educational resources and literature are currently being used in the Pulaski County school system? Is there anything currently being done that would be considered pro-transgender affirming? Anyone? All right? Is anyone aware, is anyone on this board aware of the program entitled Amazon Wish or Donors Choose? That program, so you might know what that is. It's a platform that allows educators to add items such as books to a wish list and individual or groups can purchase these books and donate them direct to the quester. Some of the items, teachers could add to their list of books with the titles of An ABC of Equity, A Family is a Family is a Family, Jack Not Jackie, Born Randy, A Story of a Boy Named Penelope, Love is Love, and even The Everyday Body Book, The LGBTQ and Inclusive Guide for Kids About Sex, Gender, Bodies, and Families. Is the board aware that this program and these books are currently being used in elementary classrooms now? These are books that some teachers have decided they will read to the youngest children in our schools without any prior approval nor consent from parents and guardians. No option given to parents to opt out of this indoctrination and brainwashing agenda. If we were having a discussion today about pure anti-bullying policy that includes students who are struggling with their gender identity and their sexual identification, no one in this room would disagree with ensuring that they are not harassed or bullied while getting the counseling they need. We can provide a safe environment without having to indoctrinate this ideology into our curriculum and literature. All our children should not be subject to these concepts because of a small percentage of our population. In closing, I'm encouraging the school board to vote no on the passage of any transgender policy that subject our children to a curriculum of an ideology that promotes a lifestyle choice that should be left to the parents and guardians of their children. Just to discuss that. The school system is overstepping its boundaries and promoting a LGBTQ lifestyle in our public schools.
Please state your name and your address, please.
Donald Jones. I am a pastor in a church, so I represent here at the county of Pulaski. Thank you for this opportunity. Greetings, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. Roughly two years ago, I was asked to give the opening prayer at the county board supervisors' meeting. It was a greatly attended, highly-charged meeting as we grappled with the Second Amendment rights being under attack for the citizens of our county. I came last month to a school board public meeting and with the Equity Act on the agenda, surprisingly, there was a very small attendance. And yet, in my mind, as a parent, it was even more important meeting because this subject has to do with the protection of our children and the youth in our public schools. Well, something sobering happened the day after that last month's school board meeting. My wife and mother-in-law were in a local big-box retail store in our county and my 80-year-old mother-in-law went into the women's restroom to find a man standing there with his back to her. She did not stick around long enough to find out what his reasoning for being there was and she hurriedly left out of the restroom. It became very real to me that this has become a divine assignment for me. So here I stand again and tonight, I will say, as I did in the last meeting, this Equity Act in its present format, as it specifically relates to the transgender community, is a very slippery slope. Now, someone accused me of being on a slippery slope, but the truth is, I'm on a solid rock. And my commitment to his word, do we have racial injustice? Yes, we do. And we need to work harder to heal those relationships in the churches, yes, in the schools, and in the community. Do we have social issues that we need to work through? Yes, we do. And each one of us have a personal responsibility in the community, the schools, and yes, the churches, be more inclusive and compassionate in our dealings with others. But for me, this has to do with morality and even more than that, the protection of our boys and girls so that we desperately want to see educators to succeed. We, that is each one of you and myself as public servants, should be appalled at the idea that a student in the name of non-binary or "they" could be defined with no sexual identification and yet they could have access to any restrooms or locker rooms of their preference without accountability. That is mind-boggling to me. He stated to me in a private conversation by one of you present that most students, regular and trans students, really desire privacy, but certainly you have considered that there could be someone that could play the non-binary transgender card simply to give them access to a locker room of their choice so they could pray upon one of our young ladies. I know the chances are low, some have argued, but why create the platform from where this criminal behavior could begin? No one in this room and no one on that stage wants to live with that, and yet if you pass this Equity Act with the model policies for the treatment of transgender students in its present form, I am afraid that you will have created the platform for predatory misconduct. We all held our breath, our collective breath when that little two-year-old boy was kidnapped from a church, no less, in our neighboring county and we all breathed a sigh of relief when he was found. The truth is, is that predators abound. Please, sirs, please, maids, let's not roll out the carpet for the evil agenda of some in our community or in our elementary community. I realize that there is a lot of attention now given to civil rights and civil rights lawsuits and in the transgender community, there is a desire for equal rights. But what about the large majority of students' rights? Those that live with their gender identity from birth? Do we throw out their rights completely? Can you afford to ignore the potential civil suit brought from someone whose young person was attacked by someone that had absolutely no business being in the locker room with them? Page 19 of the policy states, quote, "Students should be allowed to use a facility that corresponds to their gender identity. Additionally, school staff should not confront students about their gender identity upon entry into the restroom." That is astounding to me. Can we not push back? President Biden's executive order on page 11 is, "Children should be able to learn without worrying about whether they may be denied access to the restroom, the locker room, or school sports. All persons should receive equal treatment under the law, no matter their gender, identity, or sexual orientation." So will the girls join the Cougar football team? Will the guys join the Cougar ladies basketball team? Will binary students play football in the fall and fast-pitch girls softball in the spring? Under this new policy, you can no longer identify female sopranos or male tenors in the chorus part of the school. Will we actually begin to provide female hygiene products in girls' and boys' restrooms according to page 20 of the policy? Or will we privatize restrooms for the transgender students, the non-binary students, and not for the student that has maintained their sexual identity from birth? Or will provision be made in the upcoming school budget to privatize all of our school restrooms for trans and for non-trans students? Let me conclude. I know Equity Act is not on the agenda for tonight, surprisingly, I might add, and especially with an era-
If I could interrupt you for just a second. The Equity Act of Pulaski County Public Schools has been passed. It's been passed some time ago, the Equity Act. You're talking about two different things. You're talking of the Equity Act versus the transgender policy. We are still waiting for direction from the Department of Education in regard to the transgender policy. So you are talking about two different things?
Thank you.
Sure.
My apologies.
No problem.
But please hear the heart of this pastor and at least 11 other pastors in this county. You good folks have oversight of the education of our young people and our children and I affirm the work that you do. I am a shepherd, which means part of my calling is to protect the young sheep from predators. That is why I stand before you. One of the guys in the Capitol. The Family Foundation is calling on constituents and school boards across our great Commonwealth to rise up against this effort. And let me just say in closing, please, join us in saying that we will not sacrifice the safety of our kids in the name of inclusion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Jamie Dellinger. Plantation Road, Plac. I actually was invited to speak tonight from community members of Pulaski, so I want to thank the persons who invited me to speak tonight. A little bit about me, I'm actually a Jersey girl, South Jersey, if you know anything about that part of our country. Very rural, I grew up in an 80-acre farm. The joke in my town was you could decorate for the holidays with one string of Christmas lights and there's one stoplight in the whole town. So I'm here today to just speak from my expertise, my specialty, my education. That's why I was invited. I am currently a PhD student at Virginia Tech. I am a marriage and family therapist by trade and I specialize in working with the trans communities. Specifically, I work with trans adolescents and their parents. My therapy looks like an adolescent and their parents grappling with some of the darkest topics that we can grapple with as human beings, and that is life. My specialty is suicidology. And if anybody knows anything about suicide in the United States, it has for years been the second-leading reason for death amongst youth in the United States. For years, suicide has been the reason that our youth are being taken from us. So anytime policy and procedures are being put into place in any community in the United States, we have to talk about suicide prevention, especially when those policies and procedures are affecting our young persons, our youth, and our adolescents. And if you know anything about the trans community as it pertains to suicide, statistics have shown that 85% of transgender adolescents seriously consider suicide during some part of their youth experience. And 50% of trans adolescents commit or attempt to commit suicide during their life, particularly when they're below the age of 18. So the reason I wanted to speak today is just to bring something to the community's consideration. This was why I was invited, was just to urge you to consider these statistics when you're thinking about the policies and procedures that are being put into place in your community. I've had the privilege of speaking to many educators, policymakers across the country due to my specialty and my expertise. So I'd like to frame it like this. We as social scientists absolutely know that identity is not the reason people commit suicide or attempt to commit suicide or even think about it. No matter your race, ethnicity, age, geographical location, gender, sex, sexual orientation, your actual identity is not the reason you consider suicide. I'd like to frame it like this, the way that makes it easiest for me to understand, which is from Thomas Joyner, who is an American psychologist who created the interpersonal theory of suicide. He says there's two main contributors to thinking about suicide or seriously considering it. And those two things are thwarted belongingness and perceived burdensomeness. Let me break it down a little bit. Thwarted belongingness is the idea that you don't belong, but we all know intellectually that we belong, right? We're human beings. Some of you might consider yourself a child of God, all of us are children of God. Some of you might just think because you are human, you belong on this earth. So we have this thwarted belongingness when things like communities making policies that don't include us make us feel like we don't belong in those communities. So for example, for the trans community, it would be any policy that keeps them from gaining the healthcare that they need, the resources they need. And then when they go into their classrooms and they don't see themselves in the figures that they're learning about, they're not inspired because how do you picture yourself succeeding when you're not seeing someone like yourself succeed? So all of these reasons are important for belongingness because thwarted belongingness is one of the two main contributors to what's taking trans adolescents away from us. And the second one, perceived burdensomeness, is the perception that you're a burden. We all have the right to ask for connectedness, to ask for community, to ask for love and grace. But when you feel like you're a burden, when you feel like your community says it's too much to make you equal or give you an equitable, affirming educational environment, when you feel like it's a burden on others to ex- you feel like it's a burden on others to exist or to be just who you are, you perceive that you're a burden to them. So when you put these things together, thwarted belongingness, perceived burdensomeness, it's a cocktail for chaos. It's the main contributor to suicide. The transgender adolescent population is going through a horrible, horrible experience of suicide in our country, and it has been going on for years, for decades. So I just urge you all to consider these components. Consider how we make our community members and the people around us and their children, how do we make them feel like they belong in our community? How do we let them know they're not a burden? Their existence isn't a burden. And just, I urge you to consider these things. I urge you to consider suicide prevention as you put into place public policy procedures and as you accept the public policy and procedures that have been put into place. So thank you again for the people who invited me to speak today and for giving me this space. And thank you for inviting me to your community.
Thank you. Quickly, before we hear from anyone else, I've noticed that we do have several folks. Folks, I don't like this thing no more than you do, I promise you that. I don't know how our kids go a day and wear these masks all day in school. I don't know how our teachers and educators do it as well. But I would ask that you please make sure that you put a mask on during this meeting. I have a three-year-old granddaughter, she's in preschool at the high school, and that little three-year-old granddaughter wears a mask all day long. She wears a mask all day long. And I know she would rather not wear that mask, but I would ask that you please, please wear a mask during this meeting. Thank you. If you'd state your name, please, and where you live.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brittany Lambert. I'm a resident of the Klowe District, as Mr. Benson is my representative. I am here on behalf of a survey that I did, and the community who actually took the survey. I've presented you guys with the results of that survey. The answers to all the questions are on there. The comments are listed for you as to what were said specifically about you as a school board member, if there were any. The comments about superintendent that were given to him, and then the comments that were left in the last question, which we'll get to here shortly. So again, my name is Brittany Lambert. I'm the mother of two children in Pulaski County Public Schools. I recently conducted a survey, because I felt the voices of this community are important, and I was told by our superintendent, Dr. Sears, that surveys were counterproductive. Dr. Sears, would you please confirm whether you did or did not say that to me in the last parent advisory board meeting?
I think unscientific surveys can be counterproductive here.
So while I realize that I do not speak for every person in this community, I feel the opinions expressed in this survey are important and should be addressed by the school board and should not be dismissed. Due to time constraints, like I mentioned, I gave you guys the results, and the results are posted up here for anyone that would like to see them, and I'll have them posted on social media later. But here are some things that I took away from the survey. When it comes to the issue of masks, it's clear that approximately seventy-five percent of those surveyed want some form of relaxation on the mask mandate. Furthermore, the continuous mask wearing can cause low oxygen and high carbon dioxide levels, shortness of breath, toxicity, inflammation, headaches, compromised cognitive performance, and socio-physiological stress. There's an article at the end of your packet that has that article in it. Since all of the teachers and staff have been vaccinated, or at least have had the opportunity to be vaccinated, and children carry little to no risk of contracting or spreading the virus, why must this abuse of our children continue? Information was recently released showing that the American Federation of Teachers was influencing what the CDC would release as new guidance, specifically in reference to the reopening of schools. And you wonder why people don't trust the science. It's because science always seems to be made up of one part science, one part liberal agenda, and one part politics. We have been given mixed messages and in some cases have been lied to for the past year and three months, and we're still not back to normal yet, despite the fact that we have complied, sacrificed, and paused our lives in the process. It should be left up to every person to take their personal health as their personal responsibility. We need to throw away the COVID hysteria and stop waiting for the government to give us permission to get back to normal. I understand that there is a risk to living, but there is also a risk to pausing life in fear of death. It was also clear that a third of the community had no idea that an alternate schedule was being considered for the upcoming school year. It was also clear that one-third of those people also had no idea what that schedule entailed. This is a huge problem. The lack of communication coming from this board and the superintendent's office is outrageous. The people of this community, who will be the ones most affected by this schedule, should know what the options are. I'm requesting that the school board members come up with a way to make this information more accessible to the community, be more available to answer questions, be more present in the community, and hold discussions with your constituents. Ultimately, they are the ones that put you in that position, and you should be requesting their feedback and valuing their input instead of putting- The majority of those who commented on the equity versus equality and critical race theory question were in agreeance that these issues should be taught at home and not at school. It should be left up to the parents' discretion as to when to have these conversations with their children. One participant said, and I quote, "We should not be putting the ninety-nine percent in awkward positions to appease a few," end quote. I know it's already been issued tonight about, the issues already been brought up about the restrooms and the showers, but it's clear from the comments in the survey that that situation also needs to be addressed immediately in this community. I'm not an expert on, nor do I claim to be, in the proposed equity versus equality or critical race theory curriculums, and still have a lot to learn myself. However, critical race theory is an ideology, and it is state-sanctioned racism. There are many people who wanted to have prayer in public schools, and it was argued that the public institution should not be teaching ideologies because they should be separate. If you can reject religious studies in public schools, then you should reject all ideological studies. The public schools are government-run institutions, and they should be under the control of the people. How is it that it's required for an elementary children to have their parents' permission to take a sexual education course, but now you're going to be able to teach them that it's okay to change their sexual orientation without parents' permission? Also, I thought everyone agreed that excellence in education was essential. Why is our state trying to destroy that by taking away accelerated math classes, not offering advanced diplomas, and taking things such as the Fourth of July and the Pledge of Allegiance out of the curriculum? These are all things that government-run institutions cannot allow. The proposed curriculum from the Virginia Department of Education is made to be a one-size-fits-all. If the equity versus equality curriculum is going to be implemented in our schools, then it needs to be adjusted to fit the needs of this community and be voted on and approved by this community. In conclusion, we need to teach our kids how to think, not what to think. And if you think any differently, then you've been brainwashed by the liberal agenda, and you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Just one second. Just one second. I will say this, just briefly, if we could. Pulaski County Public Schools, every month, post our meeting on Board Docs. And every month, shortly thereafter the meeting, we do have the minutes of the meeting on Board Docs for you to find. And we encourage you to contact your board member. I spoke with several citizens today that called me, and I appreciate that. And that's what I would recommend. That's what I would recommend. Call your board member, don't be bashful. Call your board member, or email your board member, or send care your pigeon, however you feel like communicating with your board member, it's a good idea. But to say that Pulaski County Public Schools is not transparent, I'm going to totally disagree with that. So Pulaski County Public Schools is very transparent in everything that we do, in everything that we do. And these meetings have been on Board Docs every single month, the agendas have been on Board Docs every single month, and have been made available every single month. Minutes from the meetings come out every single month. We don't wait three months or four months to post minutes. So minutes come out shortly thereafter the meeting. But I appreciate your comments anyhow. Yes, sir?
My name is Mark Rowley.
Okay, Mark.
And I'm from Dublin, Mitchell Drive. And I'm here on behalf of my eight-month-old child. And I kind of felt compelled today because a new pastor was going to be here and say some words, so I'm just going to kind of enlighten what he was saying and maybe do a little interpret. Matthew eighteen, chapter eighteen, verse six says, "But who so shall offend one of these little ones? Believe in me, if we're better for him than millstone were hanging about his neck and that he be drowned in the depth of the sea." Ephesians, chapter six, verse four, "And ye fathers provoke not your children to wrath, but bring them up in the nature and the adventation of the Lord." Leviticus, chapter twenty-
Hold on just a minute, please. Please. And we recognize that, and we're allowing people to speak. I understand. Whether you, this board's made no decisions in regard to this matter, okay? We've made no decisions in regard to this matter. We welcome to hear your comments, it's okay. It's okay. And everybody will have the opportunity to speak. So let's respect each person's ability.
One last thing. Leviticus, chapter twenty, verse thirteen. "If a man also lie with mankind as he lied with a woman, both of them have committed an abomination, and they shall surely be put to death; their blood shall be put upon them." So I'm not going to finish the rest of what I have, but I'm going to leave that with y'all. I'm going to leave that with the man upstairs, that we can pray that this can get all settled and turned around, and we can do it by faith, what's morally correct, and that the Lord can gather students.
My name is Jessica Fisher. I'm from Dublin, I'm in the Draper District.
Captain Fisher.
I'm a parent of one elementary student who's about to come to middle school, and I just wanted to be here today because I feel as though some, I'm here for a group of parents that feel like their voices are not being heard, or acknowledged even, by the current board. I was sitting with a friend who's been up here at a parent advisory board Zoom meeting, where Dr. Sears said that community opinions or concerns about the new schedule would be counterproductive, because then they would feel that their opinions should affect the outcome at all. That comment in itself speaks volumes to me about how valued or devalued, I should say, our voices are. I know you guys have already addressed that you're not really running with the ed equity program. I've read it like fifteen times. And you're my delegate. I was wondering if, I'm not going to ask much questions today, because it doesn't really serve a purpose to ask you questions when you're not really sure where you're at yet. If you, if I can email you and get some answers to some questions, and that maybe I could, you know, talk with them about their concerns. I'm not completely opposed to ed equity, but there are some, there are some issues in it that I think parents are going to want to speak about. And then is it really fiscally possible, as the reallocation of funds happens, for a lot of these things to happen? But I'll email you about that. But transparency is something I feel we're lacking between the school board and the community, and I understand that you do both things on the Doc Boards, but I don't think most of the community knows to look there, because a lot of the community was really confused or didn't know anything about the new schedule, or even about ed equity. Ed equity has not been brought up. I know that it's posted on the Virginia Department of Education, but most of the community did not know what it entailed. And it entails a lot. So if we can't be on the same page about that, you know, get out there and really talk with people, then it's just going to negatively affect the children. But before I circle back to the issue of the mask wearing, which is totally separate, I first want to say that this is absolutely unacceptable. And it is not just my child, but in the elementary age group, our children are afraid to drink their water because someone will pop through the door and tell them to put their mask on or they're going to the office. They're afraid to drink their water. That is my child, that is my friends' children, it's multiple children. They're afraid to drink their water, and it is not their teacher. It's just someone in the hallway who pops in and says, hey, put your mask on, when they've just taken it down to get a drink of water. They are scared. My son does not even take his water bottle to school anymore, because he is afraid he will get in trouble for five seconds of having his mask down. Now through the survey, we can discern that many parents want to see their requirements loosen. The British Medical Journal actually compiled several studies that address the effectiveness of masks on children, and they came to the conclusion that masks are not recommended on their children or teens, as they are not helpful in reducing the spread and actually increase the risk of self-contamination. That masks would be effective would be to provide N95 masks to be changed every three hours to every student. The WHO actually stated, I'm not sure if we're a part of them anymore or not, but the WHO actually stated that there were actually more negative effects to long-term masking, such as difficulty getting sufficient oxygen, leading to increased heart rate, nausea, dizziness, headaches, and sinus issues, and furthermore, it can provoke an increase in stress hormones, which negatively impacts immune resilience in the future. Here's a quote from their article. "Face masks prevent the mirroring of facial expressions, a process that facilitates empathetic connections and trust between pupils and teachers. This potentially leads to a significant increase in socio-psychological stress. During childhood and puberty, the brain undergoes sexual and mental maturation through hormonal epigenic reprogramming. Several studies show that long-term exposure to socio-psychological stress leaves neuroepigenic scars that are difficult to cure in young children and often escalate into mental behavioral problems and weaken immune systems." It's causing mental issues in our children, they're going to get sick more frequently, and it's just causing social issues. I know that there was a statement that said that a mask doesn't affect you any more than wearing sunglasses, but the science has proven that wrong. Another article was actually published by the Washington Post just this morning, it's pretty convenient, because they're a pretty liberal press, so I was surprised to read it, but it was about the gross exaggeration of the CDC guidelines related to outdoor exposure, which should honestly make you question the rest of your guidance. The CDC has stated that up to ten percent of exposure was outdoors, when in fact, after many reexaminations of their records. It was actually only one percent, and even those can't be confirmed as outdoor, as they were construction sites where the men were indoors and outdoors. Which leads me to ask, why are children will be outside on eighty-degree days, dehydrated from being afraid to drink water, and masks? Just something for you to send and consider. What you do in the upcoming days, we can't tell you, but it will be in plain view of the community, and I urge you to reach out to us and keep us informed, and ask for feedback before making decisions behind closed doors and away from the very people who put you here.
I have to respond to some of this from time to time. There's not a decision that Pulaski County Public Schools makes that's behind closed doors. Not a one. The decisions at Pulaski County- We vote on everything that is brought up in, as far as an action item, every single month. Every single month. So it, yes, sir, your name?
I'm Dennis Trapp from the Ingalls District. Want to begin by thanking Dr. Sears for sharing the extra efforts that y'all as a board has done, have accomplished. It tells me that, and I'm assuming this, and I think my assumption is correct, that y'all's best, y'all's number-one priority is the betterment of the children, the students of Pulaski County. I'm assuming that. I'm also going to assume that everyone- I'm also going to assume that everyone behind me that's sitting in this auditorium this evening, that that also is their number-one concern. The betterment of the children. I understand that, and I can add to what's already been said, but I understand that there's decisions get to be made in these, especially when it deals with gender use of restroom and things of that nature. And so I would just like to encourage you to realize that, yes, legally, I guess you're responsible to the State Board of Education, but also legally and morally, which is more important than legally. Morally, you're responsible to the people of Pulaski County. Pulaski County is a conservative county. The morals in general of we, the people of Pulaski County, are far different than the morals coming out of Richmond. And I, for one, get angry when people from DC and Richmond stand up like they are kings and push ungodly morals down our throats. I encourage you in the decisions yet to be made by you, the board, that you consider all of these things, that you represent a very conservative group of people in Pulaski County. Our children are the highest concern that we have. We should come together. Education is more than just the three Rs. By its very nature, it also entails teaching right from wrong, good and bad, and right morals. Whether people are still the church and Christians or whether they're not, they expect right and wrong to also be taught. Some of this trash coming to us out of Richmond is ungodly, unnatural, and it should not be taught nor conformed to. Our government is set up and it says, "We have a government of all the people, by the people, and for the people." We and everyone sitting behind me are the people, not the legislation of Richmond. Consider, please, consider who you're representing. The people of Pulaski County and the morals that we have are far different than the morals of the most of the legislators in Richmond. Have the backbone. I beg you, have the backbone to make your decisions based on Pulaski County and not on Richmond.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Feel free to take that off if you have nobody close to you there, so feel free to take that.
Hi, my name is Jordan Westcott. I am in Blacksburg. I was invited by several members of the community, including several of my students who I teach as a PhD candidate at Virginia Tech, who live and work in this community, to speak in support of the VDOE guidance for transgender students. As a researcher, I research the mental health and access of LGBTQ+ populations, especially adolescents and youth who are really interested in how we can support people and bring them to really live their best lives. And I'm from the Buckle of the Bible Belt. I'm from Oklahoma, born and raised. I grew up in a more conservative county than Pulaski, and we can still support our trans students without putting anyone at risk. I want to speak specifically to some allegations that transgender youth are in some way dangerous to cisgender youth. There's, it's not just that it's low risk, there is no risk. That doesn't happen. There is a risk to transgender students when we don't affirm their identities. One of my colleagues from Virginia Tech spoke to the risk for suicide. But we also see higher rates of depression, higher rates of substance use, anxiety disorders, and general poor functioning when people aren't affirmed for who they are. No amount of education will make a cisgender person trans. There is no way to make a transgender person cis. People are who they are. It's an immutable fact. There's a lot of research that backs that up. By, that's okay. By affirming transgender students in schools...
80% of trans kids wear a tie or a tee. If folks, we're trying to be cordial and respectful of each other, so please, please allow us, young ladies, to speak and let's be cordial.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is no intervention, there is no exposure to anything that will change a person's gender identity. It is who they are. And when we choose not to affirm students based on who they are, we are choosing to put them at greater risk of suicide, at greater risk of depression, anxiety, other mood disorders, and make the community an unsafe place for them. When I think, as others have stated, the number-one goal is to make sure that Pulaski's children are well-educated and kept safe. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name and where you live.
So my name is Scott Hall. I grew up on Robinson Track Road. A little bit of my history, I taught high school for five years at Pulaski County High School with Billy Benson. I grew up with Paige Gang. Actually graduated a year before her. I served in the Air Force for four years, so also served in the Army for seven years. I wasn't planning on saying anything. I do want to ask the question for my son because he was concerned about that. Not only that, I am a family medicine physician. I have a degree in curriculum instruction from Rafferty University, delivered about 250 babies. Concerns that I have about this, well, I ask the first thing what my son wanted to. If you don't get funding from the state, what programs are going to be cut from the schools? That's the dividend. I want to kind of address the mask mandate. I want to address how schools were shut down, healthcare systems were shut down. Kids that had difficulty reading, doing math, have to be on a computer that they don't even know how to operate and be taught, and they struggle. My understanding is that you made the statement that this lockdown has put our school system in the education bag for two to 10 years because of that. The virus, the size of it, the science says it's five microns in diameter. The pore on this mask that you're required to wear, the opening is 20 microns. So how many viruses can pass through that? Four, five. That's science. I have patients that have COPD. I'm sure there are people in here that have COPD, and you insist that they wear a mask. And when they have the mask on, their O2 sat drop below 88%. If you drop below 88%, you can go into heart failure, you can have a heart attack, your blood sugar can drop, your blood pressure can go up, you could stroke out. I have patients that come in wearing a mask, and when they sit down, they are huffing and puffing because they cannot breathe. And their O2 sat has dropped down to 80%, and I make them take the mask off, and I have to wait 10 minutes for their O2 sat to come up to at least 90%. You've got Dr. Fauci, who's insisting that you wear two masks when one of them already cuts your oxygen. There was an article written in Virology Magazine, August 22, 2007. The research article is done, and the research was done at the National Institutes of Health. What that studied was what could treat coronavirus, what could prophylactically treat it and keep you from getting it, and if you got it, what could treat it. And the medication that they studied was chloroquine. Has anyone heard of the term hydroxychloroquine?
Yes.
What's the difference between chloroquine and hydroxychloroquine? One water molecule. And what I'm talking about, I'm a chemistry major, is oil. So when that treatment was put forth, that it would actually treat, what did our country do? Oh, no, 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 no. Do you know how many private doctors, I work for the federal government, so I have to do what they say. But do you know how many private doctors treated their patients that got Corona with hydroxychloroquine and they recovered? Many, many, many. I had coronavirus as well. I actually did pretty good with it. The thing is this, something else that I want to know. The children that are suffering from gender dysmorphia, which is a medical term for this thing that they're going through, what is the school going to do about helping them to get the counseling that they need? Who are you going to provide to help them get what they need? I don't want to see these children hurt. You know, I know that this is a church, but I can tell you this much. When the disciples came to Christ, they asked Him one thing, said, "How will the world know that we are your disciples?" And He said, "By the love that you have one for another." So how are we going to protect our own children? I'm going to pray for you brothers, ancestors, that God gives you the wisdom to make the right decision. And what this gentleman said, y'all working for us. And am I not right about that?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Mark, Dr. Marcus Weaver-Hightower. I'm a professor of education at Virginia Tech, and I was asked by some members of this school district to come and offer some thoughts about the transgender issue. I come with over 20 years of experience studying, writing, and teaching specifically about gender and its role in education. I come to you today in that capacity to support Pulaski School District's efforts to be inclusive of and offer protections to transgender and gender nonconforming students. These are students who often suffer greatly in schools and have very difficult transitions to colleges and to careers. It's my intention tonight to affirm those students' inherent rights to not only be treated humanely in their schools, but their right as our fellow citizens to receive an education that is both robust and safe. I urge you to uphold the high ethical and even moral duty to make sure every student coming through the doors of Pulaski schools are physically and psychologically safe. The guidelines issued by the State Department of Education on the treatment of transgender and gender nontraditional students are a very practical and well-thought-out baseline for doing that. I might argue even more convenient, but the VDOE's guidance are a good start. I want to thank the members of this community for coming tonight and expressing their concerns. This is truly democracy in action. It's not always comfortable, but in the end, it has the potential for the best good. I have no doubt that those beliefs expressed tonight that differ from mine are strongly held and come from a place of good intent. What I would offer is my expertise as someone with experience and knowledge, working with and learning from transgender students. I'm not a member of their community, but I hope I am an ally, for I have spent a lot of time listening to their experiences and concerns. And I hope that I might share some ideas I've learned from those folks with you. Now, one thing that those of us who are born into a body that matches the one that we feel inside, sometimes find very hard to understand, is that being transgender is not something someone chooses, as one might choose among different types of toothpaste. Transgender individuals deeply feel that they are a gender that does not match their body. I can hardly imagine myself how alarming that must be, how galling, how scary. To so desperately desire to have your outside and inside match must be difficult to live with in a culture that insists on your silence about such things. I also know it's hard to deny their sincerity about the joy and relief they feel as they transition to a body that affirms what they feel on the inside. When you listen to transgender students and adults explain it, you can't help but notice how their entire manner exudes happiness in finally, finally, being able to be who they are, to live, excuse me, to live as their authentic selves. To ask them to silence that or hide that or seek to change that is to ask these children to suffer. And they do suffer when they're asked to hide what they know to be their gender, as mountains of scientific studies can attest. I don't think it's fair to ask children to suffer, not in that way, just to alleviate public discomfort and fears. And I would urge you to affirm that basic protections transgender students are afforded for their physical and, just as important, mental health. It's also important for you to realize that transgender people are not a new phenomenon, not the result of an increasingly liberal secular society, as I've heard this evening. Indeed, transgender and even third-gender people are found across cultures and since nearly the beginning of recorded history. They are not an aberration. It is a difference that is simply real within the human population. Now, I also get the concerns of parents and community members of traditionally gendered students about the safety of their children. As a parent myself, I fully empathize with worrying about absolutely everything when it comes to your kids. The thing that we have to know as parents, though, and as teachers, educators, school board members, is that transgender students aren't trying to transition to their correct gender because they want to spy on kids in the restroom. They aren't transitioning to their correct gender because they want to get an easy scholarship by playing on the girls' team. Those are myths we've been told that don't stand up to scientific truth. Transgender kids go into the restroom that matches their perceived gender to pee. They go in there to fix their hair. If they wanted to be a predator, I assure you there are many, much easier ways than transitioning to a new gender. To suffer the indignities and harassment that many transgender people do, to be subjected to public discussion of where they should be allowed to pee, to be bullied by their peers, called the wrong name sometimes on purpose by their teachers, is not an easy way to spy on others in the bathroom. The minuscule number of incidents of transgender folks misbehaving in the bathroom pales in comparison to the avalanche of incidents of men dressed as men trying to shove a cell phone into the women's change room in Target. trying to shove a cellphone into the women's change room in Target. School policies to protect transgender students.
Pass for stew.
School policies to protect... School policies to protect transgender students are not saying that anyone wearing a dress gets a free pass to victimize others. Not showing transgender students humane treatment, protecting their need to identify as worthy and welcome in their school, is an infusion of that. In conclusion, just let me say that the protections for transgender and gender non-conforming students outlined in the VDOE's guidance document are reasonable, scientifically-based, best practices. They are absolutely aligned with the larger field of gender and education belief to be in the best genders of all students, both transgender and non-transgender students. These guidelines also align with the American Medical Association and the American Psychological Association. And these guidelines are, for many people, the best legal interpretation of many foundational laws in our country, including Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution, Title IX, and rules in place from the U.S. Department of Education. More than that, it's the right thing to do to protect the safety and dignity of these students. I urge you to look beyond the hypotheticals and what-ifs that are fueling much of the public fear on this issue. We could worry all day about unlikely events. Please look instead at what we know are the actual documented problems of transgender kids. Need to deserve these protections.
That's enough, that's enough. I afforded Mr. Hall about eight minutes. We've been laying here pretty much all night on this. I mean, we're trying to pay respect, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you. It's your name, sir?
My name is Jordan, I live in Pulaski.
Jordan, it's seven o'clock, I'm going to give you the seven oh five, okay?
Basically, I wanted to make something known, is that we've actually seen some implementation of the transgender equality that's been going on. And one case that is very prominent that I'd like you all to take a look at is the fact that there were two transgender boys who joined a track team. And the very first event that they joined, they broke the girls' records for that track team. In fact, the next girl was two seconds behind both of the boys, both of the transgender boys. Now, how is that fair to the girls?
Where was this at?
I mean, I could put it all up on my cellphone and show it right now. I'll also look at other events. I like to watch a lot of sporting events, like weightlifting and things like that as well. Several colleges have had all of their weightlifting records broken by transgender males. How is that fair to the young ladies who go to college? And, believe it or not, but not everybody has the kind of money to pay for college. So a lot of students work their butts off to be the best at a certain sport so that they can get a college degree to get the education that they want. But then you have these transgender boys who come into the girls' teams and completely smash all of their world records on their very first time. How is that fair? Will you have one degree for the transgender boys and then one degree for the actual girls who competed against actual girls? It's not fair. None of this, all of this stuff, this pandering to a single, small, incredibly minority group of people while making everyone else suffer, what about everybody else? Doesn't matter if there are predators or there are not predators going into the bathrooms. What about the feelings of the young ladies who are in the changing room? And all of a sudden, they see them getting changed and they're being looked at by these boys? And they sit there and it's like they're trying to say that allowing transgender people to use the bathroom that they want to use will somehow keep them from committing suicide? I think they need a little bit more help than that. And another thing is that, do you all actually even care about anything that we say? Because as you can tell, the majority of the people in here do not want this. The majority of the people do not want this here. So are you going to sit here and go through the motions and just listen to all of us speak? Is all that we're saying hot air? Or do you actually care? Will you actually do something? Or are you controlled by your masters who are above you and you're just going to do whatever the heck you want anyways?
May I add that? I think that's a little... I think that that's an assumption that you're making. We don't know what the guidance is going to look like after the V S B A gives it to us. We haven't made any decisions on anything. I'm taking notes, Ms. Golden's taking notes, we're listening to everything. We are going to try to make some sort of a... something work when this comes to us that's acceptable to everybody. So yes, don't make an assumption that just because we sit up here, we're not listening. I got four pages of notes, I'm listening to everything.
Well, I will say this, if you really want to actually help transgender or homosexual people, I was a ballet dancer for the Manassas Ballet for a very long time. And before that, I was a ballet dancer with the Oklahoma City Ballet. I also danced in the Houston Ballet. So I know a lot more about the gay community than probably ninety-nine percent of the people in here. And I actually come from a time before it was all that big a deal to be gay or not gay. I remember a time where people were actually judged by the content of their character and by their work and by their abilities. And I tell you what? Doing this stuff is not going to help them at all. I am all for being incredibly kind and going out of our way to teach kindness and acceptance towards other people, but not going so far as to actually implement strange ideologies in order to, like, pander to these people. There is a certain amount... Everybody can work hard and everyone can do what they're best at, and they can be known for their actions. Not their race, not their gender, but for their actions. It's why you give the best person the job. That's what I believe in.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Ashley Bowman. I don't have a prepared speech. I am actually a part of the Equity Committee. I wanted to come up here and say, I've been coming to school board meetings for four years now. I don't think in the four years I've seen this many people in total in the four years come to a school board meeting. So I encourage everybody to keep coming. I'm glad everybody's coming to these meetings. But you guys are attacking our school board, who's been working very hard for our community. Through a pandemic, our school teachers, our administration has been working through a pandemic. Our... the mask mandate comes down from the state. They don't have... they have to implement that from the state. They don't have a choice. They have to implement that from the state. I can say as somebody from the Equity Committee, critical race theory was never discussed. It was never put in the Equity Plan. I know that's a hot topic button right now that a lot of people are talking about, and it's been spread throughout the community that that was put in the plan. It's not in there. It was not talked about, it was not discussed. The principles of that are not in the plan. And I want to come up in front of everybody and say, this plan is solid. It was... you know, we're not villains here, we're trying to make sure that every single student in this community feels valued, feels like they have an equal and level playing field. Our transgendered students need to know that they are valued, that they are... It's not our place to tell somebody what to do at home. That's on you guys, and you guys can raise your children as you see fit in your home. But right now, we want to make sure that every kid has a fair and equal opportunity to fair and equal education. So critical race theory was not in the plan, it was not discussed, it's not anywhere in there. I want to put that straight, okay? And there are plenty of openings for substitutes and teachers, if anybody would like to step up. And there's custodian jobs, there's bus driver jobs, if anybody would actually like to step forward instead of screaming at our school board members and saying they're not listening. They're listening, they're writing notes. If you guys want to actually make a difference, come to school board meetings, I'm welcoming that. And I know they are welcoming that, they're welcoming... they're sitting here and listening to everybody, they're welcoming that. But to sit here and scream and only come once every four or five years when a hot-button issue is here, is not the solution. So if you guys have any questions, I'm open to questions as part of that committee. And they're always open to questions and comments. Everything is on the school board docs, everything is on YouTube, everything is very transparent. You guys want... don't want to do your research, it's there. You just have to do your research and actually make an effort instead of screaming at our school board members.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kristy Eats, and I am... I grew up in Draper, I live in Pulaski. I have raised two teenagers, they've come and gone through the Pulaski County Public School System. And I currently have a seven-year-old in school, and I have a four-year-old who will be in the preschool program in the fall. I am employed with the Supreme Court of Virginia, and my background is in the juvenile and domestic and delinquency court system. My... I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I heard a lot about information being put out there about people being afraid that our children will be attacked by transgender students. And for me, as a parent, I think that that is less of a concern for me than the fact that we are opening the opportunity for other things to happen that we may not be seeing now. So one of the things that I think about is that the number of protective orders, non-family abuse protective orders that are issued in the state of Virginia, certainly in Pulaski County. The majority of non-family abuse protective orders are, in fact, bully-related cases in schools. My seven-year-old has a little bit of a bully in her second-grade class. And she's young enough that her teachers keep a close eye on them. But in a situation where we have male and female students going into the same restroom, we are providing the opportunity for someone bully to be able to chase them or go after them into a restroom. And nobody would blink an eye because we've desensitized ourselves to that. I also think about my responsibility as a parent is to protect my children not only from others, but also themselves at times. I raised three teenagers, and one of the rules in my house was you were never alone, unsupervised with a member of the opposite sex. And that is a protection for my children. I'm keeping my children safe from making decisions that teenagers sometimes would make in that situation. When we open up the restrooms, and no one blinks an eye because both boys and girls are going to the same restroom, it puts my sixteen-year-old, my seventeen-year-old, my fourteen-year-old in a position to make choices where normally they may not have that opportunity. Certainly can happen now. All I'm saying is, we're opening the opportunity, we're not keeping a careful eye on our kids in those situations. And those are just some of the other situations that I can see happening. And so really, my request, to understand that the school board, there are certain things that in order to keep your funding, your hands are tied, you have to implement certain things that come down from Richmond. I'm dealing with all the legislative changes going into effect July one as we speak, and it's a little... it's a nightmare, is what it is. So my request is, for the things that you do have some control over, like how the transgender policy is implemented, that you would please consider the privatization of the restrooms so that we really can protect our children. That it's not to look down on transgender students, it is just to ensure that our non-transgender students also remain protected.
We're running a little late tonight, it's kind of nice to see all these people in here.
It is.
I'm the parent of two students in Pulaski County Public Schools.
And your name?
Dublin, resident, my name is Gina Payne. I've also learned, I'm being referred to lately as a member of a faith-based anti-equity movement. I do hear you showed a video of me at your meeting yesterday, one of me speaking at my church. I think you find me so important. I'm not going to really make a statement, a lot of ground has been made here tonight. But I do have a couple of questions as it relates to the equity agenda. This has been passed. They're full steam ahead based on their meeting yesterday with implementing all of this. Dr. Sears, back in February, you disclosed to us that we're here that you estimate twenty to forty thousand dollars will be spent on teacher training programs concerning this equity agenda. Who is the organization you will be hiring to conduct this training?
Just the Equity Collaborative.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the Equity Collaborative? Was Loudoun County Schools consulted when you were researching who to hire?
We know that they have done some work in Loudoun County.
Publicly available information about the Equity Collaborative, and I encourage everybody to look them up, shows that their model for training of teachers includes the critical race theory model. Have we signed a contract to hire the Equity Collaborative to train our teachers?
We have started the training with our administrators and the Equity Collaborative, yes.
Have we entered into a contract with the Equity Collaborative?
Yes, we have.
Would you be willing to publicly provide that contract to all that ask for it, would like to see it?
Absolutely. You just need to fill out a four-year request and we will provide it to you.
Okay. I noticed in your opening statement, you said nowhere critical race theories included, yet you're hiring an outfit to train our teachers.
And nowhere in the curriculum.
But the teachers will be trained in critical race theory.
No, the training we have been... If you want to hear my input, then you need to let me speak. If not, then I can respond to emails.
Thank you.
The training that we have been doing is based more on adaptive leadership. There has been no mention of critical race theory in anything that we have done. To date, we have worked on listening skills, understanding, you know, how to provide respect as a listener, and how to provide feedback as a listener. There has been no discussion of critical race theory.
Okay, is that training been done by the Equity Collaborative?
Yes, it has been.
Okay, well, they continue to train our teachers and staff? Is there more to be done?
The contract is to finish the training with the administrators and to do training with each school's equity team. Not... at this point, there are no plans to do training with all of our teachers, although that is a requirement next year from the General Assembly and the Virginia Department of Education. But no decisions have been made about who will provide that training or what the training will consist of.
Well, I do encourage everyone here to look up the Equity Collaborative. They were hired by Loudoun County Schools, they introduced critical race theory into their training. My second question is, you indicated back in February, part of the conference of... My second question is, you indicated back in February, part of the conference of plans would allow twenty percent control over literature and teaching materials by your handpicked equity teams for the schools. Are you willing to commit to releasing to the parents a list of the literature that they choose for each school? And will students be allowed to opt out?
Yes, the schools are in the process of doing their audits currently, so there have been no materials purchased with school funds to that end. But certainly, we will provide a list of whatever is purchased, you know. You just need to do a Freedom of Information Act request at the time that that information becomes available.
Will you publicly release it so we don't have to engage in a legal process? I'm asking, will you put it up on board docs, please?
Yes, we can provide it here to the school board and put it on board docs. That's fine.
Will our children be permitted the opportunity to opt out of the reading materials that are chosen?
I can't answer that question till we know what those reading materials are and how the teachers plan to utilize them.
Mr. Hurst, on no less than three prior occasions, the board and myself that came to speak here, public comment was made by others who came behind us. Many of them members of your handpicked equity advisory team. They proceeded to refer to those of us who've questioned this agenda as racist and transphobic. Were these advisory team members tasked with acting as the board's public enforcement team?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Did you give them, did you task them with going out to enforce this policy against any of us who questioned it?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so when they stand here and publicly say, anybody questioning it is racist and transphobic, do they serve as your representatives when they do that?
They're just like any other member of the public. They can address the board at that time and that's, they're speaking on their own in that regard.
Has any member of the equity advisory team been instructed on how to engage social
Not by anybody in this board.
Well, seeing as the, these members of the equity advisory team that have come up here in the past referring to Mr. Williams and myself as racist and transphobic, and some of them are teachers, do you support them standing up and maligning the citizens of this county?
It's, I'll gladly answer if you'll hush. I support every citizen's right to speak their opinion, to speak their, whether I agree or disagree with their opinion, I support their right to speak their opinion.
Okay, considering their tactics, do you think it acceptable to have these teachers call students who push back against this agenda racist and transphobic?
I've not heard any Pulaski County Public School teachers say that.
Well, it hasn't been implemented yet. It'll start in the fall. What if we have students who push back on it, like many of us are? Will they be maligned in their classrooms?
No.
Can you give us assurance of that?
Can you give us assurance that you'll say the truth when you speak in front of your congregation at church?
Yes, I can.
Oh, well, then, so as far as the school system is concerned, everybody's an individual and you can't guarantee what one person will or will not say. I can't sit here and say that Ms. Golden and I are going to agree on a particular issue and that she's going to go out and say something that I totally disagree with. So, no, to answer that, the answer's no. I can't guarantee that.
Okay. I spoke before my church and advised them that you'd be conducting an equity audit with the students. You will be, if you have not done so already. I advised them that the comprehensive plan allowed for control to be ceded to equity teams in the schools on the picking of literature. You will be doing that. I spoke to them about the outfit that you've picked to retrain the teachers. What part of what I spoke was false?
I'm not claiming that what you said is false. You're the one that made claims against this board as to whether we're saying something is false or not. So, I'm not making that claim one way or another.
Okay, lastly, Mrs. Cox, sweeping change has come into Pulaski County curriculum under this concept of advancing equity. Could you please define using specifics what equity means?
Equity to me means giving support to individuals so that they can succeed. In our case, it's succeeding in education. Equality as contrasted means giving everyone the same thing. Many have seen or heard of an example of where a person needs to reach a certain height to see over something. And everyone is given a box to stand on, but not everyone needed a box. Some could see over the fence in the space without a box, but they hadn't. Some needed two boxes, but they only got one. So, that one couldn't see over the fence. So, equity would have been given that other kid, or in our case, children, another box. So, that to me is what equity is. Giving individuals the supports that they need in our case to educationally succeed.
Okay.
And that's why it's not all about the color of somebody's skin.
Was it not named a racial and social equity agenda?
And if you remember, this board sent that back several times and asked for it to be reworded, to be more inclusive.
Okay. And also was not a statement put on Pulaski County website, public school website condemning the community as systemically racist?
There was no condemnation of the community, but there was an admission that there had been practices that were systemically racist that have impacted education for generations in Pulaski County.
So, you had specific incidences that led you to make that statement?
Yes.
Okay.
They were covered in the presentation when all of that was presented. You can, I mean, Pulaski County has a long history of legal issues regarding, you know, the pre-integration of schools during segregation with not providing an equal education. You know, they lost a court case regarding that when Frank Frazier was the superintendent and had to take steps to correct that. And as we pointed out in that meeting, you know, that's not ancient history. That there are grandparents and great-grandparents of our students today who lived through that time and experienced that inequity. And they were affected. Their whole, their experience about education defines their attitude towards education and the children's education, the grandparents' education. So, the things that have occurred here for generations are still reverberating through public education in Pulaski County. And that was what was addressed in the equity presentation, the first presentation back in November when the mission statement was approved.
Ms. Payne, your time is up.
I would like to say something else if I may, Mr. Hurst.
Sir.
My example, to follow up on my example of equity. I have a son, I have two sons. One of them has Down Syndrome. So, many of his school classes were challenging for him, always challenging. In high school, what I really wanted to focus on with him and during the IEP sessions was being able to advance in his reading abilities. Because if he could do nothing else in this world once he left school, I wanted him to be able to entertain himself somewhat and read, or be able to pick up a movie that he wanted to put into his DVD player and know what it was. So, I really pushed the administration at the high school at that time, which is different than it is today, to give him the support that he needed, what would be equitable in his situation to allow him to advance his reading skills. Year after year, because he spent about nine years in the high school, that happens with Down Syndrome. Year after year, his reading ability did not advance. And I asked why. I really had to push for answers. Really did. Finally, I think the case manager that he had at the time got tired of me asking and knew I wasn't going to quit pushing, and he said he can't get past the second grade reading level because the second grade reading materials is all we have in this class. Now, I said, how much does that cost? He said about six hundred dollars. I said, if you'd have told me this several years ago, don't you think I would have bought it for six hundred dollars? Had I known that earlier, I would have been at a school board meeting and I would have been pushing for six hundred dollars to have been spent. It probably wouldn't have been at that time, different board, different administration. But that is the kind of equity that we want to give to our students. That is the support that we want to be able to give. It may never mean he got, he would have got a job, but it would mean he could read a cereal box if he wanted to. That's the equity that some of our students need.
And I understand that.
It was equity for everyone.
Just agrees with that. You all act like we're spending the exact same amount on every child to educate them when we know there are individualized educational plans, which there are many, more resources are being expended on children where it's needed, and none of us have a problem with that. It's being done that way. You've interjected an agenda here that started out on a foundation of racial equity. You're hiring an outfit that utilizes critical race theory model. And for you to say anything else is just deceiving. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Lawson. I pass the top man, but I'm here to say that I don't have no children think going to an elementary school. I have to run the company. Is there any transgender people in this place? Raise your hand.
That's not right.
Actually, if you are transgender, do not raise your hand in this room. You will be docked, you will be trapped. That is what...
Why do you want to shove one percent of your, of transgender on somebody? It's ninety-nine percent people here is not. There's no reason for it.
No, no.
You know, you can't, you can't let your, you know, boys go in girls' bathrooms. If they won't claim to be a girl, you know, that's, they got a mental problem, I'm going to say, with any medication. I agree with Scott Hall. They do have a problem. They need to be helped. But don't shove it on to other people that ain't got no problem. A female to be a boy, that's just crazy. Are y'all men? Are you women? Of course. That's why you was born with it. You don't, you know, you don't change, you know, just because you're healthy, just because you, you know, it gives you a high going of a girl's bathroom or whatever, you just don't do that. There's policies you should be implementing. Protect the kids, that's for sure. Taxpayers pay for their school, right? They pay y'all salary, you know? Taxpayers, do you want taxpayers coming here to school and guard bathrooms and everything just to make sure the policy or make sure the kids safe? You don't want that, do you? You don't think a hundred people coming here and control the schools because y'all won't force the issues? If y'all want to, you know, do whatever the government says up there, now that's on y'all. I remember you as a teacher when I was growing up. Probably do remember me, but God help you, not me. But, you know, it ain't right. I mean, you can't just shove stuff on a kid, you know? They don't want to learn or don't want to, you know? It ain't right. When I was growing up, you know, I didn't want to be shoved stuff in my throat. And we can't shove the Bible on the school system. We can't shove that on to the school system or you'll be in trouble. They took the Bible out of school years ago. God help everybody, you know? Right's right, wrong, wrong, get it by principles. And to create policies and change everything, it's going to cause corruption. It's going to cause a big havoc. You're going to get a lot of people involved, you know? People going to protect their children no matter what. No matter what the policy says, what the government says, people going to protect their children, grandchildren, no matter what.
Ms. Golden?
I just wanted to say something real quick. For those of you who know us and some that don't, we have children in school. My son is in school. I have nieces and nephews in this school. And I've joined this board because my heart is in this school. I take offense to some of the things that are said, that I don't listen, or that I don't care, or that somebody has to speak for me. And I want you to know, nobody speaks for me but me. I do that. My son is the most important thing in my life. My children, your children, his grandchildren, her daughter, they mean everything to us. And we are fighting an uphill battle. And we are here fighting that battle for you, and we have been. I'm the newbie. I'm the newbie to this board. They've been here, they've been doing this. And it has been trial by fire. But I have showed up every day to do what you ask me to do. And I will do it. And I will do it to the best of my ability and do what's right for everybody, for everybody, not just one person, one group, or one division. So, I just wanted to say.
Sir. Good morning.
My name is James Wood. I live in Dooking. About three-quarters of miles from Jim.
Used to throw rocks at each other.
Absolutely. I think that was a better aim.
More likely.
I think you hit me a little, few more times in the head than I hit you. That's history determined. Y'all are in a tough predicament. I heard you and Ms. Cash both say something that kind of struck me. Y'all said y'all were waiting on orders from the Department of Education. Guys, you work for these people.
Got it.
You don't work for Board of Education.
Absolutely for the students.
Anybody ask you?
Not for these people, for the students.
Okay, I didn't mean to speak.
The students are represented by their parents. I'm not a eloquent speaker. I don't know most of you. I know three, that's the only one I know. This equity, and I use that term loosely, when you are considering taking away the advanced classes, that's not equity. When you're punishing gifted students, which I was not one of them, trust me, you're punishing those students. Do we need to possibly invest more in the students that are not doing good? Absolutely. Should have known that forty years ago. I don't have, I don't have a problem with anything that anybody set up here, including the ones that are for it, so don't blame me yet. The only problem I have is I thought this was a public meeting for Pulaski County Schools. Why we give so much time to people from other states? I don't understand it. Who is speaking here? You or I?
Other people to speak for them because they are afraid and want to get threatened.
Hold on, hold on.
Ask you the damn question, ladies.
Jimmy. I'm going to ask you, everybody who's watching.
One spot, pastor? One spot, youth minister? Y'all think about that.
Y'all think about that. But I have been threatened by more Christians half a week in this room.
It won't take me to the second. Like I said, I'm not an eloquent speaker. The thing y'all have to do is make up your mind. Whether you're going to listen to Richmond or you're going to listen to people that put you down.
I appreciate the comment, Mr. President. Thank you.
Can I say, can I say one thing? I'm looking here at the new math requirements. It's the Virginia Mathematics Pathway, Pathways Initiative. And what it's designed to do is set students on a course to go through higher level math and then into college. We've been working on this on the college level for a while, trying to make the pathways a lot easier for students to transfer from dual enrollment classes and New River, and community colleges to four-year universities. There's no plan to take away higher math. If you, if you read it, it's on the VDOE and it does not say anything about taking away higher math. We will continue. I know that, I know that's been said. And that might be a misunderstanding. I, I don't know. But we will continue, New River Community College, to provide dual enrollment credits in calculus and trig and analytic, um, geometry calculus. My daughter takes it. It's really hard. I don't understand it myself. But we're not, we're not taking. I'm, I'm telling you, we're not taking that away. As a matter of fact, we want to increase offerings in higher level math through dual enrollment offerings with New River Community College. We would like to have more. We just got to have teachers who have master's degrees who can teach it. It's on the VDOE website. It's the Virginia Path, what did I say it was? Virginia Mathematics Pathways Initiative. It's going to make things easier for students to transfer credits from dual enrollment classes to math, to four-year programs.
I will defend the young lady here, even though, uh, I don't think anybody would ever consider calling me a religious person. Um, I do, her research was good.
Well, I'd like to, I mean, I'd love to talk to you about where that came from because that's not what we're doing on the college level. We're increasing offerings and not taking away. So if you want to sit down and discuss that and I can put you in touch with Pat Huber and you can talk to her too about what we're trying to do.
Dr. Cash, with the, the math initiative, it is, basically what we, the system we have right now is a student can finish all their math credits by the end of ninth grade, go three years with no math class, and then go into college. And students are struggling when they get there because of that gap. This is actually putting math in at, at ninth and 10th grade that are fairly standard courses and actually teach the things that we've been asking to be able to teach for years, like understanding interest rates, figuring out how to balance your check, but things that have been missing from the curriculum for decades. This is putting those skills back in. It's still offering the advanced level classes, but they're taken as a junior and senior. And that way, there's no gap between when they take those classes and when they start college. It's just a smooth transition into college.
Well, anybody that's seen what's happened to education in the last year, when you skip three years of math, imagine what that does.
It's, it's disastrous. They end up in developmental courses, often taking eight to nine hours of developmental courses that they pay for, but for which they receive no credit. So this is to eliminate that problem.
Need to move on. Thank you, Jimmy.
Hi, Dr. Spears. Uh, Mr. Chair, remember the board.
You're welcome to take your mask off, Ms. White.
I appreciate you guys giving me the chance to speak tonight. Uh, Hazel, Wines, I live in the Angels District. You guys know that because I'm here fairly often. I want to say thank you for taking the time to attempt to correct the misinformation I've done. But it's difficult to sit on the stage and hear people say things about you and about policy that's incorrect. I want to thank you for your patience and for always looking out for the children, for not looking out for yourself, and whether or not people like you, but whether or not you're providing quality education for our children in a safe and caring environment. I appreciate, Ms. Cox, your explanation about the difference between equality and equity and the impact that that can have on someone's life. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. White. Please state your name and where you live, please.
My name is Tawana Grub and I live in Pulaski. And I'm not sure which one of you is my representative, but I would like to know. Okay. Well, I had listened to her give the, the definition of equity. And one of my questions is how does allowing our children and giving them equity to learn and to grow, how does a restroom fit into that? Uh, okay. Because I don't underst, I don't understand that. But I have three kids in this school system. And I have children who have IEPs. I have children who have 504s. You, um, our school system in that aspect is, is lacking. I have one son who is in the first grade, who has never spoke a word to his teacher. Never. He has a 504. I can't get him a para because according to the school system, he doesn't have access to the cur, he has access to the curriculum. He's learning. And he is learning. But he needs that para so he can get up close to somebody that he can learn. He can get to know. Because he has what they call selective mutism. How many of you on this board knows what that means? I, I, I really want to see a show of hands. How many of you know what that is? Okay. The majority of you just do not know what that means. That means he will not speak to you unless he is comfortable. That means that he will not, he's not going to have anything to do with you. My child, we're sitting up here talking about transgender students and how much they need. And my child, who is a seven-year-old in your school system, doesn't have that. So if we're going to worry about a transgender student, which we should worry about them all. They should all have equal rights. You want to talk about equality, you want to talk about equity? It's the same thing. My child doesn't have. But we're going to make sure a transgender has. If a transgender should have, my little Nate should have. And I will fight for my Nate. I will be seeing you, Paige. Because if we're going to make sure that everybody has, even playing field, everybody will have muted. I don't want my son to go into a bathroom with a girl. Okay? I don't want that. I want my chil, I want my son to be safe. I want my sons to be safe. But I want the girls to be safe too. I want everybody to be safe. But I want everybody to be equal. I want everybody to have the same playing field. So if you're going to offer this to transgender, to homosexual, offer it to everybody. Offer it and make everyone safe and not just the select few.
Ms. White.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Davis-Brackliff. I live in Dublin. I haven't lived here very long. I just wanted to address that, number one, I know you guys have a very tough job. And I would like to speak to you as, from the point of a foster parent who has fostered trans youth and to ask you that, um, yes, they are going to need protection, especially, um, from coming into this area. I can see that now. Unfortunately, it's very saddening. And it, it actually breaks my heart because so many of those kids have come to families that I'm sure will lie in the deep end. But that's it. But that's a part of the law game. And I agree with the lady that was in front of me. If her child is able to get services, then the trans children shouldn't be able to get services. Every child should be able to get services. But the difference is that when her child walks down the street or down the hallway at school, her child doesn't have to worry about getting beat up.
That's not true.
That's not, yeah, that's right. And how many trans people do you guys have?
Ms. White.
How many?
Ms. White.
They all got bullies. They do all have bullies. I understand that.
Please, just address the whole, please just address the whole.
They do. Everybody has bullies. But the level of hate for our students is amazing right now. And this is very charting. So I would just like for you, for just those of you, please do something. Our youngest son is actually in third grade. I mean, don't want to know if he's ready, but we're just seeing after this, we won't continue. But I do equality and I do hope that you make the decision.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Hello, my name is Pat Chapman. I retired as Director of Counseling in Pulaski County High School in 2001. I was a sophomore. I've been a resident of Pulaski County for 71 years. Started out at Snugga Level Mentoring Blue River School and on to Dublin High School and then three years later, back to Dublin High School as a teacher. We've got great kids in Pulaski County. And they have overcome a, a lot of problems. And they're doing great. We have the backup for them. Things like that are important. But as a counselor, I want to clear up the misinformation given by the people from Blacksburg. I don't understand why they were here, they're not residents or us. As a counselor, I dealt with suicide in the high school often. And that's something that with counseling, kids work through. But it was in partnership with the parent too. They would get some counseling at the high school, but the parent would also pay for private counselor outside. The suicide, uh, the lady who mentioned the suicide rate, she gave misinformation. Suicide rate with transsexuals is all not at that level of high school, 17, 18, 19. It's all on the upswing when they get into, uh, real life and they realize they cannot turn back. They made stupid decisions when they were young and all of a sudden it hit them. What have I done? I fill my body full of hormones. I mutilate my genitalia. And here I am, 21, 22. What do I do? You can't go back. And on documentary recently on television, they had a lady who called herself a male, married a woman. She did not go through the surgery, the genitalia of mutilation. And she decided, well, I'm a man, I dress like a man, I call myself a man, but I want a baby. And she was carrying the baby for that family. And things like this, when things like this are presented to kids, they're at such a young age, they don't have the maturity to think things through. And if they have a curriculum out there that presents, uh, transsexual as an alternative, they, they think if they're having a bad day, okay, I'll just become a transsexual. That's going to solve all my problems. It doesn't. But putting that in front of them, uh, puts that opportunity out. It confuses them. And they think, you know, my teachers are my heroes. If they're saying and presenting this, it must be okay. And we've got to remember, parents send their children to school to learn, to be taught, but not to be indoctrinated. From experience, uh, I can, I can relate to the, uh, school policy on indoctrination. When I was chairman of the Social Studies Department, we always made sure, when we were teaching government, not to let the children know if we were a Democrat or Republican. Because if we had spoken up and said, I'm a Republican, I'm a Democrat, this is what you should believe, this is what you should believe, we would have been fired. In fact, that word came out from the school board office. You do not indoctrinate children in politics. But yet, you can indoctrinate them in this gender matter and you're okay. School is for learning math, English, science, and social studies. Another concern I have is with the number of ladies that we have, athletes who get scholarships. And that's great. It's been so good for them. It starts in elementary school. It comes up to middle school and high school. They really work and they spend time. But yet, what I see coming, those ladies will lose their scholarships because a male will decide, okay, I'm going to go over to the female team and I'll get the scholarship. And that is not fair to our children. We've got to be really careful here. This is a momentous decision. And I'm so glad to see that parents are saying, I'm going to step up and I'm going to be my child's hero. Kids need heroes today, people to look up to. And they don't have a lot out there when you consider the, the people, some people in sports who will not stand for the pledge of allegiance. You have the movie stars who think they know everything. There are not real heroes out there. We need to be the hero. We are responsible for our children from conception, before the born, conception up until the age of 18. There are laws on the book that say, okay, oh, you can't get married till 18 without parent permission. Driver's ed, you have to be a certain age and have parent permission. There are all things out there that protect our kids saying with parent permission. And that, that's the key. That's why we're hearing on it. There is a parent permission. And there's a line there, a thin line there between parental rights and rights and what we call state's rights or government. And I really feel like government is encroaching on our right to protect our children and to raise them. Why have children if they react the way you talk, things that are not within their neutral family?
Ms. Chapman, I'm going to ask you to wind down.
I'm fired up.
Well, let's get it unfired up really quick.
I spent 31 years in Police County as a counselor. So I think I know these children. The last thing I could say, you throw something like this at children, and the children usually go the route of their parents, their church, et cetera. I see, it's been my experience in the past, that we've had student walkouts at the high school. And I fear that because once these students feel like, I don't matter, we'll get a break together, and we'll walk out. And it will be three-fourths of the high school that walks out. We've had that before. The mistake was made when the principal said, if you walk out in a peaceful protest, we'll lock the doors and not let you back in. That didn't work because parents said, you lock my child out of the high school. You can't do that. But I appreciate you listening to me. And we've got great parents in Police County that love their kids and are responsible.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will close this public comment section. There is another public comment section toward the end of the meeting. We've gone about exactly two hours, I believe, in public comment. Again, we do appreciate your comments. The board does have difficult decisions to make, some decisions that do come, of course, from Richmond, and that is challenging to afford. But we do appreciate the comments of each of you. We very much do. And I would encourage you to contact your representative on the board at any time that you feel the need to. Please call your representative or email your representative, and they'll be more than happy to speak with you in regards to your concerns. I would much rather see that or hear from a citizen on the telephone than I would to see something all over social media or whatever. I'd much rather talk to you in person or face-to-face. I'd be glad to. And I know that each of our board members would as well. But again, we do very much appreciate you coming out tonight. That brings us to the approval of minutes. The board earlier today received copies of minutes of our April 13 regular meeting as well as our April 19 joint board meeting with the board supervisors. At this time, are there any comments or questions regarding the meeting, a regular meeting of April 13 or our joint meeting with the board supervisors on April 19? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for both our April 13, excuse me, April 19 meeting. Sorry, I don't have that. I'm not on the wrong page.
April 13.
Anybody, it's a meeting.
Okay. A motion's been made. Mrs. Cox, is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Pence. Mrs. Porter.
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hur?
Yes. Brings us to the adoption of the agenda. The board has received a copy of the agenda earlier. Are there any questions or comments regarding the agenda for this evening's meeting? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as written for this evening's meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Mrs. Porter.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Hur?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes. Brings us to the consent agenda, payment of bills as well as personnel agenda. The board has received a copy of both at this time. Are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mrs. Porter.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Hur?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes. Brings us to instructional focus. For that, I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Sears.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The instructional focus tonight is with Police Elementary School. Josh, are we going to be able to position that such the board can see? You have an actual presentation on that?
Yes, sir.
We've got the power point, Dr. Sears.
We do. We have the power point. We've got it. Yeah, we have the power point. That helps. Officer, if you could, would you please shut that door? Thank you.
The floor is yours.
All right. Evening everybody. So, of course, Police Elementary has instructional focus and like, it's just kind of just some slides, a little description to show what our lovely kiddos have done this year. We just want to start off. We can't ask for a better place to be. Our faculty, our staff, our parents, our parents, you know, sit there. If you've been through our parent pickup lines and our parent drop-off lines, thank you for being patient. But we like to think it's become a well-oiled machine. It's because of all those, all those people working together. So, you want to go to the next slide? Police Elementary, we like to sit there and grab about a size. 521 strong, baby. We do, we do big, we do a little. But we kind of make that work. We wouldn't have it any other way. You know, with that said, you know, it's a lot of kiddos, but it's a lot of smiles, too, at the end of the day. So, we want to start off, kind of, about the summer before things start up. We, Ms. Puff and I finally got where we're kind of brand new on the shop and everything. We got, we're looking to go ahead and shoot pictures a little bit. So, we like, if you want to find out if you've ever been to Police Elementary as a student, a parent, a teacher, we try to hook you up every chance we get. Because a little bit of sweet comes a long way. Now, I don't know, since I've searched, you might have passed these out, and probably. You've got a little canyon there, guys. Don't expect a large thing. I brought her a rehearsed kiss for you guys, too. So, I apologize. But we like to think that, you know, basically, that smile that when you walk through our building, that you give quite often, our students, our staff, our parents, you know, it kind of makes it, we like to say, a very, a warming climate, okay? So.
This year has obviously been very challenging. But from the beginning, I think it's just made us think of even more creative ways to do things. So, like a lot of the other schools, we did a drive-through open house, which was really successful. The teachers loved it, parents loved it, students loved it. Our teachers had even asked for that to be a thing. Scotty Scott had music for us. Teachers were dancing, we got balloons. It was a big thing. And then the Chick-fil-A band drives up, and then it gets even better. So, the students and the parents just loved that from the beginning. Yes, it was going to be a different year for their students, but they still saw that we were ready to have a good time. And then when we finally got to get the students in the building, yes, just 25%, move out to 50, get it to 100%. And then getting Chromebooks in their hands, seeing the kindergarteners, preschoolers carrying those Chromebooks in. It's a lot for them to carry, but they love it. It's a huge incentive for them. They are so happy to be in the school, 100%. And every day, it's, we enjoy so much out in the back.
All right, Greg, this is some of the things that we did throughout the year. Of course, this was in conjunction with our Employee of the Month, Mrs. Dowdy, of course, the teachers. We made this available to, basically, our virtual, and we tried to keep virtual and face-to-face. We tried to include everybody in the same picture. What we did, we kind of had some guidelines, but the kids came up with all these anti-drug posters that we were able to put out for the parents to drive by and parent pickup. And we got so many comments, of course, the kids would come out and point at the ones that they did. And, you know, it gave them a sense of ownership and let the parents know what we were doing. And, you know, and it's still, you know, wonderful cause we put, you know, putting, you know, some dollars in our kids' hands with that. And that was a well, that was a well-oiled machine when it came through that week. But they were so proud of those signs. Okay, I'll be the first to say, I'm scared. Sorry, I threw my faculty on the bus here. But you see them dressed up. If you were at Police Elementary, you would see them walking amongst the parents. Halloween, for some reason, when we did Spirit Week, it's the first real week, and people that came in to see that was, for us, the first full week where we see kids were happy back in school. We got, we did a lot of fun activities that week. We were Panther Pride, sports teams, you name it. But that Halloween Day was probably one of my best days ever as, you know, as just being a part of, you know, any kind of school.
So throughout this presentation, you'll see that a lot of what we tried to bring back into normal was surrounded by Spirit Weeks. So even the week before holiday break, we had a Spirit Day for every single day. Students enjoyed dressing up. The day we were getting out for break, Mr. Price was dressed as an elf. And we had Polar Express Day, so it was pajama day. And we had a Zoom meeting for the whole school to join, and Mr. Price read the Polar Express. And then we delivered everybody a bell, just tie that in together. And then we even took a little spinner wheel. Every day, folder numbers were called, and that's for student prizes. So we tweaked that a little bit, and we were able to go from door to door and let every faculty member spin the wheel for their holiday prize. During National Reading Day, we decided we were going to do drop everything and read time. So at nine o'clock that morning, we made an announcement, and no matter what they were doing in their class, specials or not, everybody dropped what they were doing, and they had 15 minutes of dedicated time to read. And as we walked around classes, went into classes and read to classes during that 15 minutes, teachers were asking if we could do that daily. They loved it. So that was a huge thing that was successful this year.
Okay, and this kind of went along with a lot of our, keeping our parents involved with virtual. We did have a parent involvement, a virtual week, to where the kids would sit there and do STEM activities at home and turn that information in. So we got a lot of responses on that. That's some of our pictures of the guys making some soap bubbles. And the parents, we also have videos of parents doing that with their children as well. It was a very good week of being able, for face-to-face and virtual, to kind of be doing the same work. Acts of kindness week. This was also done through our guidance department. Basically, what the kids were able to do, every teacher was giving coins. And those coins were distributed to the kids, could either give them to somebody or spend them on little gifts. So any kind of act of kindness, you know, basically, they got a coin, and you could turn those coins in. And so that was really getting with a lot of the students, was in the end, every student got something.
So for, we've heard, like, Reader's Fest America Week, well, we decided to spread it over the whole month of March. So March 1st came around, then, instead of thinking about basketball brackets, we did a Battle of the Books bracket. And every class filled out a bracket. They learned how to do brackets and predict, make predictions on what they, what book they thought would win. So then every week, they got to vote on what book they wanted as a class to choose to win. And we kept updating the board. And then the final week, if you give them out a cookie, was declare the winner of Battle of Books for Police Elementary.
Of course, these are some of the things, you know, we do believe that, you know, of course, keeping our students appreciated. We also believe in a healthy school. We try to make our teachers and staff feel appreciated every chance we get. So these are some of the things that we did throughout the year. And of course, we had another Spirit Day where we actually was just straight up just for Panthers. So that's why everybody got to wear the purple.
So during where both schools and recognize it's Reader's Fest America Week, we did the entire month. Because it's just a lot to keep, one full week, we wanted to focus the entire month on how important it is to read. So every theme day went along with a book. So we had Tourist Day, and teachers got really into Tourist Day as well, all the day, actually. And of course, Dr. Sue's Day. Book Character Day. It was crazy to see all the creative, the creativity throughout the building. Teachers, elementary teachers really get into the dress-up day more than the students, I think. And there we could see some of our teachers who really got into this stuff.
And then, of course, you know, at the end of the nine weeks, the third nine weeks, you know, we're sitting there, well, we need to do something special for the fourth nine weeks to let the kiddos move. Hey, you're almost there. So we did a fourth quarter kickoff to where they got to dress, you know, as their favorite team. We gave them incentives, gave little prizes and things like that. That really, you know, kind of, let's just say, resparked, you know, killed through the long haul.
So book fairs are something that our students really look forward to. While they were very disappointed that we didn't get to have a book fair, while our librarian kept trying to think of any way that's possible to make sure that our students got to participate and have a book fair. So the Scholastic Book Truck came, dropped off all those cases. And we posted everything online to where people could order online. But then students got to, some of them would walk through and see them, but there were order forms. And every day, they were coming in with these green order forms to get their books. And then that same day, they would have a bag delivered to them. So they still got to see the book fair come to school, just like everything this year.
And of course, these, the next couple of slides are some of our teacher activities. For example, you know, we have a social studies competition, especially, we also use booklet and some instructional programs that we're having kids compete against each other with questions that's coming up on the SLOs. Also, we had a teacher that wound up creating a whole doctor's office where they were dissecting math facts. And kids, if you walked in there that time, they thought they were doctors. It was a wonderful place to see. And then, of course, you know, just, there's numerous other slides that we could have included on this, you know, from the early kindergarten right there with their butterfly projects, still always a hit. It's a time trip, an activity they love. And then, of course, math races, the kids kind of. So then we wanted to show a little bit of this as well. You know, it's a lot of instruction, but we also like to have our fun times, too. These are some of our favorite places that the kids have the fun, you know, throughout the day.
And opening up playgrounds with, like, bringing Disney World to the school. There's a schedule, and they don't get to go every single day. But the days they get to go, they make sure they tell you it's their But the days they get to go, they make sure they tell you it's their playground.
And thank you for everything. It's been a crazy year, but I think we, Glassville Elementary is an exceptional world.
Thank you guys so much. Brings us the informational items. Dr. Sears will leave it with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is our students ever visiting here? Yeah. Oh, you know, you are great.
Good evening, Dr. Sears, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I came here today prepared to talk about school morale and end of year celebrations, but things kind of took a turn. So I'll, I'll go quickly through those. Long story short, morale is up. People are happy to be back in school. We're happy to be back with our friends. And it's close to the end of the year. We're getting ready for our formal night, which is on Friday. Everyone is so excited for that. This week is Spirit Week, so everyone's participating. We're all, especially the seniors, excited for graduation, and we're just so thankful to have a semi-normal graduation. Moving on, throughout this meeting, my phone has been blowing up. I've had friends that have texted me going, you have to say something. This is, it's crazy. Long story short, I won't say everything that has happened, but people are wondering if there can be a student advisory team just for the, for the equity team and for transgender involvement. Sorry, I'm going to my notes. I would just like to thank you all for making it your goal to provide a safe environment. I think you all know that a student cannot learn if they do not feel safe. So, long story short, people are wondering if there can be a committee for this. I know many people that would be more than happy to participate, and if so, how can they reach you? And I think that's about it. So thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Ben.
Mr. Chairman, Caitlin Kemsey, who is the new executive director for the Region Seven Virtual Academy, has been waiting patiently since 6:45, because I told her we would be able to zoom her in. If I can get her back on, can we move her up on the agenda? She has a newborn at home as well. She tried to zoom in a minute ago and, uh...
I'm sorry, we should have probably paused and had that.
Hi Caitlin, can you hear me? Josh may have to set it up so we have, um...
Got one's there, the y'all's there?
Yes, please. Caitlin, can you hear us? Can you hear us? Mr. Parker, if you'd like to go ahead and get through the budget update.
Yeah.
If we can do that without pulling it up, we'll continue to try to get Caitlin back on.
Be happy to. Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Sears, just like to briefly, I guess, present the budget analysis through April 30th. It's hard to believe we only have two months left in the fiscal year. In terms of our revenues, our basic aid payments are slightly behind budget. Been adjusted downward due to the September 30th enrollment. State sales taxes still are slightly ahead of budget, you know, much to our, for my surprise. At least, it was a big unknown for us about this time last year, what our state, the state sales tax payments would do. But those are, have been very strong. The rest of our revenues are coming from lottery funds in the second half of the year. Are catching up. All of our major expenditure areas are below budget at this point in the year. Our general fund transfer for April... Oh, our general fund transfer for April was $914,006.47. That leaves about $5,227,759 of our county funds available for the remainder of the year. And you have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chris.
Caitlin, can you hear us, Caitlin?
Can you hear me? What is going on, hello?
We'll have to improvise and move the microphone to the black house and see how this works.
So you can hear me, but not on a loud, I guess, not loud?
I think it's...
Yeah, we're, we're good. We're good.
Okay, very good. So hello, everybody. I'm, I'm, members of the board, chairman, Dr. Sears, I appreciate you. I'm sorry for the technical difficulty there at the beginning. You know, as an executive director of the Regional Academy, usually we don't have technical difficulties. But so is the nature of the game. So I did just want to introduce myself. And I have a presentation to share. If that's something, Dr. Sears, are you okay with that? It'd be about five to six minutes. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Okay, I will do that right now. So I just want to jump in and kind of explain the academy and kind, and give you a glimpse of what we're doing. I think oftentimes we throw ourselves into something, we don't know exactly what it is, but I just wanted to jump in here. So the Region Seven Virtual Academy was, it's important to note that we, it was built out of necessity for the region. What we found was that we were losing enrollment to virtual programs during the course of the COVID pandemic. And teachers were managing dual methods of instruction. So the in-person and the virtual is just a lot for your teachers. As well as, we wanted our students to have the same access to options of classes that other students in the state have. So what we did was, it was a collaborative effort among 17 school divisions in Region Seven. So there's 19 total. 17 have opted in to participate in the Regional Academy. And something to note, any division could have chosen to go with a virtual provider. So what is the benefit of the academy? And that's actually a couple of different reasons as to why the academy has it, is strong. And so number one is shrink the numbers. When 17 divisions teamed up, we were able to get better pricing from those providers who have been working in these fields for a long time. So they streamlined the virtual process, took it off of our teachers, and gave us pricing that was, that was stronger because we were able to pull our resources together, pull our people together. Secondarily, you get media liaison between the provider and the school. And so hopefully that decreases our workload at the school level. Infrastructure in place, and this is an important one. Right now, we're using this to teach students in the virtual environment. But what we created is a regional infrastructure to do things like STEM, project-based learning, career readiness. That, that virtual board will already be in place to maybe offer those as summer offerings to our students. So really, we want to view it as this is the academy. Yes, we're currently doing virtual learning. We can expand that virtual learning to include different levels of innovation. So that's an important aspect of, of the academy. And lastly, but not least, it's more logistical, coaching protections. It protects your division from losing students to another division if your students go with the virtual provider and not with your school system. So that's just the basis of the academy, how it started, what, what got us here. Curriculum instruction, we, we allow the divisions to have flexibility in this choice. And so hopefully, we went with three providers to choose from. Divisions that participate can choose one to three of those providers. And that is going to be the people who provide the instruction for your students to offer virtual learning next year. Again, if it's an option, it is certainly not a requirement moving forward. It's available for, for those who seek it out. Additionally, we've asked these companies to provide, to align with CIP pacing. And therefore, that, that will keep them on the same playing field and being able to transition back to in-person if they chose without having, losing much in the middle there. So a little bit of logistics, students are enrolled with your division. So a Utesse County student is enrolled with Utesse County. Good thing about that is the division receives ADM for that student. And a portion of that ADM is going to pay the provider, but we are not losing the money for that student, which is really important. Especially as we saw a loss in numbers following the COVID-19 pandemic. It is free for students and families. This is public school. It's a public school option. And therefore, since they're enrolled with our division, it is free for our students and families. Last but not least, we put a eligibility criteria in place. It was important for us to have students who are in the virtual environment actually learning and participating and treating it the same way they would an in-person environment. And not just having this opportunity for, for kids to be virtual and not have that chance to, to do what they're supposed to be doing in that environment. Next, the, next thing we have here is, we do have a website for the academy, www.r7va.org. So as we progress and move towards this new school year, that will be a location to learn more and gain some insight. It's up and running now, so you're welcome to check that out and, and learn more as we go. Next, innovative opportunities. I alluded to that in the beginning. I did just want to touch on that. We are the first academy like this in the state. So we recently applied for Virginia Board of Education approval. And it's important to note, they had lots of questions because this is the first, first of its kind. It's novel. In fact, you could tell they were kind of wondering what we're doing because they need an option themselves. So kudos to our region for, for taking this on and for creating this option because I know that that's not happening in other regions. And I think it's an innovative approach to some of the Senate bills that we're seeing. Additionally, we do have that infrastructure in place for cross-regional exploration of enrichment activities. And last but not least, I know I gave you a short, sweet version, and I'm sorry. I hope that's okay. I will provide my contact information. I encourage you to reach out to me if you have questions. Like I said, I gave you, I gave you the quick, the quick, I guess, presentation of this. And I'll be happy to answer anything more thoroughly. I do want to be respectful of your time. And as we move forward, reach out to me. That's what I'm here for. So I'm going to stop sharing the screen so I can see you guys. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or I can also, I'm just here for whatever you need.
Any, any questions for Caitlin at this time?
Are you there, Dr. Sears?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you, Caitlin.
You're welcome. And like I said, I will send this presentation to you for you to share with your board members. And I encourage you to reach out if you have any questions. Thanks.
I bet. Thank you. And no one has questions except I would like to know, do we not get to see the newborn or that?
Your kid. Can I show you his newborn baby?
Absolutely.
Listen, that might be a good twist for this afternoon. Listen, we just got him out of the car, so he looked at this thing. He's, he looks like that all the time, man, who's dead ten stairs and is crying.
And his hair is growing.
He was born with a little hair, and I don't know if Dr. Sears would...
How light was the meeting right there?
Five and a half weeks old, and we are learning how to parent and do all the things that come with that. So, I mean, it's a great baby.
Congratulations. He's a good-looking baby.
Thank you, thank you. We're working hard on that here in Washington, D.C. So I appreciate your time tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for waiting on us. I'm sorry that I...
No problem. You're welcome. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I believe it's time for an operations update, Mr. Shaw.
Yes, it is. I think that's the first one up for me. There we go.
Okay, good evening, Dr. Sears, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll be as brief as I possibly can. The operations update, work orders are at 77. That is down from last month, although slightly, not as much as I wanted it to be. Custodial wise, we're doing the best we can, shorthanded. We are six short in the custodial staff right now. We are 12 short in the bus driver staff right now, but we're managed. So any questions on the operations update?
The grass looks great.
Thank you. As always. Yeah, I'll let the guys know.
And that, by the way, was some comments that I also hear from the public, so it's impressive.
It is.
Yeah, the guys do a great job with the ground, there's no doubt. There's no doubt.
Operations building bid schedule.
Okay, the bid schedule is, we got the engineering documents back. They have been reviewed. We plan to post and send them out to contractors this Thursday. We plan on having a pre-bid on June 1st, and we plan on closing the bid June 15th. Construction market has gone the other way. Everybody thought we would see a summer slide. We've actually seen a dramatic summer increase. And I mean 40% dramatic, over where it was, and it was already up. I also was contacted by the engineer that did the design work for the van roof and said that due to a national, a nationwide roofing material shortage, there is a good possibility we will not be able to do the van roof this summer. We're not panicking yet on that. We're still pushing forward with submittals and everything. But it's looking like we're not going to be able to get the material to do it. It's for no fault of anyone. We just can't get it.
For circumstances.
So hopefully, it doesn't affect the building, but we'll know June 15th where it's at. But again, the construction market has taken a dramatic turn in the other direction. So I don't know what to do with it. The next one was the, oh, yeah.
Top 10.
Top 10. I did a, I worked on a spreadsheet kind of after the joint meeting to where the possible funding sources for the capital improvement projects may come from. So I'm assuming you guys have a copy of this?
I do not.
No. We, I will have friends in the mail, I email that everyone, I apologize.
That'd be fine. Okay, basically, what it boils down to, I took the, the, I didn't bring my glasses. I apologize. I'm still not, I'm still not happy that I have to wear them. The future debt service, the active capital fund balance, the future debt service, the estimated carryover, and then the potential for five, to purchase five buses out of the capital fund. Basically, did the math on those and projected it out over 10 years. And what it boils down to, currently estimating the carryover every year at $450,000, we could complete the prior... and fifty thousand dollars, we could complete the priority list in the year twenty-eight, twenty, um, twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine. That is just the priority list. And that's assuming that we get four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in carryover. So that's something you have to, you have to use an estimate there. So, but it's an active spreadsheet that we can track and put real numbers in as we go, and then we'll know where we stand. And of course, when you get the spreadsheet and look at it, I never zero it out because this, uh, this projection does not take into account emergency purchases. For example, if the chiller at the high school, you know, blows up, then you could just pretty much burn this projection, and it would be no good. So it doesn't take that into account. Since you don't have it, you really probably can't ask me any questions.
Well, I have a question back on the, on operations.
Yep.
Do we have enough gas for the buses?
Um, yeah, I'm watching that. We are watching that closely. Uh, we, we do have the ability, since we're, we're, the county owns its own fuel tanks. So unless this is prolonged, I don't see it becoming an issue for the buses. If it, if it stretches over a couple of weeks, it could. But I don't know. Again, it seems to me like this is just a knee-jerk reaction by the public, and hopefully by this weekend, it's over. But I don't know. I am watching it.
You see me outside a road.
Yeah, I don't think you should try to get gas on your way home tonight. There'll be a lot.
I'm hoping there's some left.
Any other questions?
Remind me again, Mr. Shaw, at the high school, we have finished with the switchgear. Were we doing the switchgear this summer?
Yes, ma'am, we're doing it this summer. We're replacing the switchgear and building the new welding lab.
Okay. And that is not held up by any of these construction issues, is it?
I don't know. I don't know yet. The switchgear's made of metal. Everything in it is metal. I don't know. It seems like it's changing weekly. You read, you know, I get the forecasts, and they're just, they're all over the map. But right now, no one associated, none of the contractors associated with the switchgear replacement in the welding lab construction have expressed any concern over getting the materials.
Okay.
At, to this point.
Any other questions, Mr. Shaw? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, it was, uh, part of one of my goals this year to look at, the goal was to find a way to get information out on a digital source that didn't depend on social media because that was turning out to be, uh, not very productive in the feedback that we were getting from that. And also to look at projecting a more positive image or getting a more positive image out there. One of the objectives was to form a committee, and we did. It was made up of parents and students and, and teachers and principals. And to, to look at a new logo. I think the, the logo that's been in place has been around for about seven or eight years, and the motto of Reach His Child has been around for fifteen or sixteen years. And we thought it was time to do, to freshen it up. You know, we are, Pulaski County Public Schools was not like today like it did five years ago, so we wanted to, to try to select something that, that reflects, uh, where we are and where we're going. And, uh, the committee's first meeting was cut short by the power outage in Pulaski, so we had to do a lot of work through email and polls. But they came, they ranked through the surveys, the, the committee members, and then we came back together and talked about the rankings. And this is what the committee selected to move forward with. And, and you can see the logo there, of two, uh, people coming, jumping out of a book with the sun in the background. And, uh, we would like to change the motto to, uh, a pathway to a brighter tomorrow. Pulaski County Public Schools, Pathway to a Brighter Tomorrow. And we are in the process of getting, uh, uh, the software that will allow us to tailor this more with cougar colors and, and, and give it more of a Pulaski County feel. But this is what we have currently. I just wanted to update the board on that. And hopefully, we'll have all that finalized and new letterhead and the new logos on our website and all of that. You know, we'll, we'll get all that changed out.
Any comments or requests for Dr. Sears?
I'm glad you said that was a book. I've been trying to think of that one, don't they?
Yeah, I, I wasn't really sure that was a book either, so. We, we will see the final product, right? Once you get the colors and everything.
All right. Thank you.
And we have the second half of our Virtual Academy update.
Thank you, Dr. Sears, and Mr. Chair.
Fast our bedtime, Mary.
Yes, it is. I was looking at Tommy. We got about fifteen minutes to go, and we got a pack Basset Hound pup. She's really going to be mad. She goes to bed at nine o'clock every night. Just this, real briefly, and just let me say something just a moment, please. I would be really remiss if I didn't say thank you to this board, thank you for Dr. Sears for the last five years, six years, however long it's been.
Twenty-five.
Thirty-five. No, Tommy and I have been married for almost forty-four, so it's not been thirty-five, I guarantee. But, uh, I, I really would appreciate it. And this last year has been the toughest of thirty-nine and years and eight months. And I want to thank you all, and I want to thank Dr. Sears for his leadership in getting us through this. And we're better for it, and I know that. So thank you all.
You're a pretty big part of that as well.
Well, thank you. But our process in choosing our virtual platform for the next school year for our virtual students, Region Seven, as Kate once said, presented us with three virtual platforms for basically to choose from in any combination. And we looked at all three very carefully. We looked at Edgenuity, Stride, which is formerly K-12, if you've heard that name out there, and then, of course, Virtual Virginia that we had used for several years. Our leadership met with three virtual platforms and evaluated them on the following criteria. Content alignment to our Virginia standards, ease of navigation, because if we learned anything this last year, we know that our students, our parents, our guardians need the ease of navigation. Our special education supports that are available. If available, their past performance on school quality reports, the assessments that are built into the programs, the availability of synchronous instruction. Lesson design and delivery was very important, and, uh, we looked at things, how was the lesson presented? How was feedback given to the students? Tutor availability after hours because we know many of our parents work during the day, and our students need help and assistance after school. So we were after hours, we were looking for that. And then, of course, our CTE and specials courses that are approved by the Virginia Department of Education. And based on those criteria, we looked at Edgenuity as the most promising platform for our division. So we've selected that one for the elementary and the secondary levels. In addition, we will probably continue to use Virtual Virginia some at the high school level and possibly even at secondary, just because of some of the other offerings that they have that Edgenuity may not have. So Edgenuity primary with backup by Virtual Virginia. Any questions?
Um, I, I want to clarify for anybody who might not understand exactly what it is we're talking about. This is for students who choose to go virtual next year, but it will not be taught by our teachers.
Exactly. It will not be taught by our teachers as it was this year. This is for the students who will go all virtual, whose parents choose that route. Our teachers will still have access to Canvas and Virtual Virginia if they choose to use that in person. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Ms. Raj, we had talked about being on the board, maybe being on the board for Region Seven Academy. In that academy, we had talked about maybe moving in the future to a possibility where a student could do part virtual and part in-person. Has that been part of your conversations?
We have had some conversations with that, and we actually did that this year, Ms. Cox, in some aspects. We chose to allow students who were in upper-level classes, such as the advanced CTE courses, to come in and do their hands-on coursework while they were also doing the virtual academic part at home. So yes, ma'am, we have continued to have those discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raj.
Thank you.
And I will add, anybody that goes through that through Pulaski County will be a cougar.
That's right.
And still be a cougar.
Yes, you can still participate in athletics and, 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 uh, the, the bill that was passed actually changed its form initially. The bill was written that we had to provide a virtual option and let students take it no matter what. And, and that was concerning because we have so many students who just have not been successful with virtual this year. And, and the region put out some fairly stringent guidelines to screen students for virtual for next year. But then when the, the final bill came out, now every student, we have to provide nine hundred and ninety hours of instruction or a hundred and eighty days of in-person instruction next year. And virtual, we have a lot more flexibility to, to determine what students need to do to qualify to participate in a virtual program. So if we have students who have, were not successful this year and not participating, then they will be re, if, even if they requested to go virtual next year, but they didn't demonstrate any type of, of success in it, then they will most likely be assigned back to in-person.
Okay.
Okay, the, the next item is a summer school update. And, uh, Miss Raj, you're earning your money here the last month.
That's great. And just one more thing, I want to acknowledge my husband. He came tonight to make sure that you all approved that retirement. So I just want to say that, uh, thank you all for doing so.
And I would just like to say, when Mary announced it yesterday, we had a staff member at the board office who vomited. I guess it's a good thing that people vomit because you're leaving. And it's the opposite, they vomit when you walk in the room.
It could happen either way, don't you? Well, Ms. Ruesberry, you want to come up and join me? Ms. Ruesberry is our administrator over the summer school program in Pulaski County. So we wanted to share with you what we have planned for this year. And we think it's exciting. It's different than we've done in the past, but I think it will achieve, uh, help our students achieve more over the summer, and it's all of our students. So we're looking at tiers one, two, and three. So all of our students are going to have support if they choose to participate. Our goal for the summer, for our students, is that they maintain the academic progress that they have achieved this year and that they do not experience that summer slide that we know all comes each summer when students are not engaged in schools. Our virtual platform will be available for tiers one, two, and three. Understood if you want to go to the next slide. Tier one, all students, all students, K-eight, will have access, have access to the Edgenuity virtual platform. The title of that platform is PathBlazer. PathBlazer is a supplemental online intervention program that helps move struggling learners up to grade level proficiency in math and reading. Students begin with an adaptive screener to determine their grade level, then take a diagnostic test at that level to pinpoint exact skill gaps. So we felt like that screener would be very important to guiding our students on the correct path for achievement. And I think another real important aspect to this program is that it syncs with Star Reader and Math Assessments. That's the benchmarks that we give as screeners in our division. And so the kids who have already taken Star Reader will not have to take that diagnostic test. It will synchronize with that, and their pathway to success will be designed for them. PathBlazer will be available for three months, starting June first and running through August Tier one, again, all Pulaski County Public Schools students, K-eight, will have access to Edgenuity PathBlazer. Our ITRTs, administrators, and summer school teachers will have Edgenuity Professional Development beginning tomorrow at one o'clock. Where is Ms. Ruesberry? Okay? Instruction will be provided on how to navigate the program by the ITRTs the last days of school. So our plan is to send the ITRTs into elementary and middle school full force and get the kids at ease at logging on and navigating before they ever leave the school this school year. And all students will be encouraged to participate in this program, and incentives will be provided for use over the summer. Tier two students have access to all of that, plus they have access to, uh, teachers who will be hired to monitor that progress over the summer. They will come in, they will have small groups, those teachers will have, uh, the ability to make contact with students either by phone, by Google Meet, by Zoom, different areas, so that they can actually connect with students and parents and monitor the students over the summer. We can also bring the students in in small groups, and I think that's going to be a, a big asset to our students. Tier two students are defined as being students more than one year, but less than two years Staff, again, will make regular contact, and depending on student progress, teachers, again, can invite these kids in for face-to-face individual or small group tutoring, as well as virtual. So we're going to try to reach the kids in many, many ways. Our tier three students are defined as students who are two or more years behind, and they will have access, again, to Edgenuity PathBlazer. Tier three students will also be invited to attend a face-to-face, two-week summer school program that will run July twelfth through the twenty-third, eight-thirty to two-thirty. In-person for these students, these kids will be allowed to be serviced targeted interventions, such as Orton-Gillingham reading approach, small group, I can't talk tight, small group interventions and hands-on activities. One thing I forgot to mention, on the tier two, we're going to give the home schools the command over this. So the kids will actually be working, we hope, with teachers in their home schools. They will already have, hopefully, have some relationships built with them so they won't lose time trying to get, uh, learn, get accustomed to each other, that they'll be able to offer other opportunities other than just the, um, online PathBlazer. One thing that we've talked about, a lot of teachers want to do kindergarten nights, kindergarten reading nights, so that they can bring the kids in and work with them outside, read some stories, do some readers' theaters, different type of things that, than we've ever done before. Ms. Ruesberry, is there anything you would like to add to that, as far as any of the other ideas that teachers or principals have come up with?
No, again, giving the command back to the schools because each individual community is so very different. And so if we were able to take that back to each individual school, then we can reach communities in different ways. So that's really the overarching focus, is that we reach not only the child, but the parent, so that we have a buy-in from all perspectives.
And just to give you an idea of the scope of this, over two-thirds of our students are at least one year behind grade level currently. And this is, it's a huge undertaking, which is why we're not able to provide face-to-face to every student who's significantly behind this summer. We're, we're trying to target those who are most behind and, and, but still offer support. And as Mary said, you know, try to stop the summer slide for all students by incentivizing participation in the virtual program. It's not anything that's going to be burning some money, what, a half hour a day, about what's expected. About two and a half hours a week if they will commit to that, then, you know, there's a, a really good chance that they will at least be able to start next year at the same level that they're in this year. And, and we won't have to try to, you know, make up for what may have been lost over the summer.
We're going to try to reach out as well and have them reaching out to local daycare providers, the YMCA, the youth centers, different places like that where children are going to be for their summer when their parents are working and asking them to help us, you know, design a time within that child's day and help them get on and participate in the program. So time to reach out to all members of the community.
Right, and camp cougar that they do, the junior camp cougar that they do at Randolph Park, I've spoken with Mr. Abrams about that and seeing if he can assist us and help him Park, I've spoken with Mr. Akers about that and seeing if he can assist us in helping the kids find a designated time just to practice some during the day on this. Uh, at Gilaski County High School, our program is going to be similar to what it has always been in that it's going to be a credit recovery approach. We will be using the PlayToe virtual program that we've used for several years. We're going to offer this, uh, program this year, uh, three weeks, July twelfth through the thirtieth, because we do anticipate several students needing to try to make up a credit or two, if possible, during this time. Uh, at this time, the plan is for two staff members, one that will monitor student progress, make contacts, counsel, do those type of, uh, counseling activities with the kids to make sure they're on track, and then one to operate the actual program. And with this, we can do, have some flexibility in that, in hours. If the student is working in the morning and can't get in at that time, we hope to have some later afternoon hours to where the students have more flexibility to come in and do so. And then depending on the number of students who elect to attend this, the number of staff may need to be increased, so. Which is, that's kind of been a holdup pattern right now, basing it on previous years.
Ms. Riesberry, if you have.
Dr. Shores?
It's a lot of moving parts.
Yes, it is. It's rolling, but, but I think it's the right thing to do for our students. We, uh, we really brainstormed a lot and tried to figure out how we could, uh, offer this to everyone and offer it in as equitable of means as possible.
So the, the students who are going to do the summer school in this process, maybe Josh can help answer the question, they're still going to have access to their front books?
Yes, yes.
As well as the wifi devices?
Yes, we're, we're not, we're not, uh, taking up the front books this, this summer. So the kids will have them all summer until, till next year.
Well, I'm sure my daughter will be thrilled to get hers back.
Well, if, if there's an issue of, uh, if you think you can't keep up with it, we'll gladly take it back and hold on to it till next school year, but most, most students were, were letting them keep it for the summer.
We did something similar to this last school year with the purchase of iXcel for reading and math, and we made it accessible to all students over the summer. And we were pleasantly surprised with the number of students who chose to log in and do some work over the summer. So we're hoping this will go as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ries. Thank you, Ms. Ries.
We're cautiously discussing how to approach Chris about coming up with incentives for students to put in extra.
We have legion.
We keep coming back to gift cards and they get smashed.
I think we're going to have to use, uh, food, probably.
Yeah, and that's, you know, it could be that we have a, an ice cream, yeah, ice cream social the first week of school for everybody to be able to eat twenty hours over the summer or something like that, you know? And then maybe do something bigger and do a drawing for everybody who we hit the, we thought, we'll, we'll figure all that out. And get information out to the students and their families within the next few weeks. Got any calendar items, uh, midterms, uh, Friday is the junior senior beach night at Clayton Lake, so if, if you're still up to it, put on your, uh, Hawaiian shirt and roll up your pants leg and come on out and, and, and help chaperone or, or dance on the beach if that's what you want to do. It, it should be a good event and, and I know the students are excited about it and I, Jennifer's still here.
She's hung in.
How are the teachers feeling about Jennifer?
How are what?
The staff about the beach night.
We're all excited. We've never done this before, so we need an interview, but we're excited. We have lots of votes on that. We will take all of you on stage on Friday.
The, uh, Memorial Day holiday, school board meetings, U N A's, uh, Friday, June eleventh graduation, uh, well, this needs to be up for, well, this is correct as of right now, but hopefully we'll be able to change that here in a few minutes. Uh, I will say the retirement dinner, the invitations went out today, and that is June third, I believe, from six to eight. And, uh, also, we are going to plan to do some type of reception to, uh, recognize our, uh, faculty and, and our teacher of the year and our employee of the year for, of the year for each school, uh, prior to our board meeting in June, so on June eighth, if, if everyone's available to meet at five, we'll plan to do something, probably here in the cafeteria, uh, uh, some type of recognition and reception for them. And we're also inviting last year's, uh, teachers and employees of the year because we did not get to do any type of formal recognition for them.
Super.
So retirement dinner at the high school?
Yes, it'll be at the high school.
Well, everybody better dress warm Friday night. It's going to be a little chilly.
You knew that would happen.
All right. Brings us to action items. Uh, first item is, uh, school calendar adjustment. I know we've got a couple of teachers out here that are kind of interested in this. So, uh, we'll, we'll go ahead and, Dr. Sears, if you'd like that, to cover that one.
I know that Ms., uh, Castelluccio is opposed to this, and she meant to speak out against it.
June tenth is my birthday, so.
No, we, we have calculated the hours and, and we are in really good shape, uh, especially if you compare us throughout the state, we're in incredibly good shape with the number of hours we got in. And, and based off of that, I, I would recommend that, that we, uh, amend the calendar to end the school year on June tenth instead of June seventeenth and have the last day for teachers of June eleventh instead of June eighteenth.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Sears? Karen Knott, is, uh, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we make June the tenth the last day of school for students.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Porter?
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
You gotta have a little fun once in a while. Okay. All right, that brings.
Is the last day for teachers, Dr. Shores?
Yeah, eleven, yeah.
During the last, last day.
God, this guy was giving me an evil laugh. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar, Dr. Shores?
Yes, uh, we have, uh, we presented the modified calendar as an option for next year and, and based on the feedback we received, decided that next year would not be a good year to try to introduce it, but there seemed to be more positive feedback about trying to follow here. And we have done the, the focus group, um, and have those discussions and, and there's been a recommendation on the table. I will say that Mr. Benson asked prior to this meeting if we could table it for one more month to, to try to get additional information. And that's perfectly fine with us. It, you know, it's still very, very early in the calendar process, but, but one of the things people ask, that if we were going to do it, we'd give them as much notice as possible. So we kind of set the deadline, if we're going to do it, we want to make the decision before July that, that we're going to do this, to give people at least a year's notice that that change is coming.
I, I think that's fair. Uh, Mr. Benson has asked if, if we could, uh, table this for a month. Is, is the board okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll table it from there.
And, uh, the last action item is, is appreciation, the appreciation bonus and, uh, you know, we've taken a look at what other counties were able to, uh, mid-year and, uh, you know, recognize that, that we were one of the few counties that actually gave a, a raise that was in place this entire year. But at the end of the year, we, we have assessed our situation and feel like we can, uh, you know, match the act of other counties and, and maybe not the dollar amount, and we would like to, uh, extend a five hundred dollar appreciation bonus for, uh, for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year and also offer a two hundred and fifty dollar retention bonus, uh, for any employee who returns their contract for the next school year within a week after receiving. And, and that will be a huge help to H R to make sure we've got the business built for next year, because a lot of teachers have, uh, or, or not just teachers, of employee of any, employees of any classification, if they're looking, sometimes they'll hold on to that contract till after July first and, and then we get in a bind trying to fill the business. It would just help us know, to know who is definitely coming back and who is not. And, uh, and, and, uh, two hundred and fifty dollar retention bonus hopefully will help people, uh, get their contracts back in more quickly.
Sure. Any comments or questions for Dr. Shores? Will this include all employees?
It will include all, uh, employees with a regular contract, all part-time and, and full-time, uh, faculty and staff members. Chris, it doesn't include substitutes, is that correct?
We have not discussed including substitutes at this point.
Yeah, we have talked about, we need the assassin to see if there's a way to, to recognize and show some appreciation as well for our substitutes, but we have not yet factored that into it.
What, does this include like central office staff?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, okay. Anyone who is, that, uh, is employed under a really contract? Okay.
And bus drivers?
And bus drivers, paraprofessionals, uh, school depression staff, yes.
And this does put us in line, uh, very closely to what, to the, the bonuses that's, or the bonus that the county offered its employees in the center.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Uh, the recommendation is to, uh, approve a five hundred dollar appreciation bonus for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, uh, and a two hundred and fifty dollar retention bonus as well for, for school employees. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the appreciation bonus and the retention bonus for all employees.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Uh, Mrs. Porter?
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Cash?
Yes.
Ms. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes. Brings us to future agenda items requested by the board at this time. Do we have any items, uh, agenda items to be requested? That brings us to recognition of citizens. Uh, if you'd like to address the board at this time, we'd be more than happy to hear Everybody's talked that. Thank you all for coming.